Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The April 1st, 2009 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., and also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should the alarm activate, please leave through the exits. Our marshals will tell you when it's safe to return. We make this announcement at every meeting, just in an abundance, of course, and no reason to believe that that would take place. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation by Reverend Ed Lovelady, Rector All Saints Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we know you to be a God of grace and mercy. Bestow on the members of this council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may do the work of this council, seeking to make our city a place where all people find justice and peace. Bless all who come before this council today with your grace of patience and truth. On this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual but liberty and justice for all.
Are you gonna be a good boy? All right, the mayor's talking, so keep quiet. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and we recently had a very special event take place in our community. In these times, we often hear about layoffs, the bad economy, and other bits of bad news. But recently, we got a chance to see the good in our community as people came together to help a family in need. Countless volunteers and many city staff gave their time to rebuild a home for a Las Vegas family chosen to be part of a television show, Extreme Makeover Home Edition. Approximately 13 to 18 million people watched Extreme Makeover Home Edition on Sunday nights, and in May, viewers will get to see the heart that the city of Las Vegas has. While there are countless folks who helped with this project, there's one local group that really stepped up to the plate, Wright Custom Homes and Wright Engineering, coordinated with ABC and the city of Las Vegas to ensure that the house was built. I'd like to ask a couple of key individuals to please join us up here. Daniel Bartlett, Ring- Daniel, come on up, please. Ring Quintoner and Jeff Lehrer. And, folks, we have certificates for each of you for your hard work. Let me shake your hand, please. We really thank you for what you did here. You are putting Las Vegas on the map. Thank you so much. We're gonna be placed on the map in a way differently than people ordinarily think of us. This is gonna make a very special statement about Las Vegas and who we really are. As with anything, there's a, well, that says, whoever wrote this script, it's outrageous. They said, "A ringleader." What, are you a gangster? It's unbelievable. No, there's a force behind it. And in this case, who is Brent Wright? Brent, come on up and join us, please. Brent was involved in all aspects of the project and was there every step of the way. And we'd like to present you with this certificate, name of you, as our April Citizen of the Month. And not only were you intimately involved with the project, but you're also involved in so many other community activities. We really appreciate you, and we applaud you for your community pride and for your leadership. And on behalf of the entire City Council, we'd like to congratulate you on being named the April 2009 Citizen of the Month. And in addition to the certificate, you'll also have this street sign, named after you, and that will be at the front of City Hall, so everybody will be able to see it. Now, we have a special treat with us today. It's not just these good folks who made this contribution to our community, but the recipients of their largesse are here as well. Would the family please come up? This is a very special job, and before the council meeting today, I had the privilege of being with this beautiful family, and they're so grateful for the opportunity that was bestowed upon them, and not only from the point of view of the TV show, but this magnificent home that they'll have the privilege of living in and enjoying all the comforts of life as they deserve. So with that, I'd like the family to speak first, if you would, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright for a few remarks.
Thank you. One thing I brought attention to this morning is that the house is amazing, and it's made such a difference in our lives already. And Molly, who has a lot of lung damage, has been able to breathe freely in our house and not have any of the lung problems that she's had for the past several years. But also, what happened in this community goes so far beyond just the Las Vegas community, and what the community did is gonna have a worldwide impact, because we represent- last week, I went to Washington, D.C. to meet with our senators and legislators from the state of Nevada. And this house is a platform for us to save the lives of thousands of children and adults across this nation that suffer from immune deficiency disease, and it's a chance for us to raise awareness. And we're extremely excited. Nationwide, my understanding is that Extreme Makeover, or worldwide, is viewed by over 90 million people. And to have that kind of a viewing audience to raise awareness about the disease that we suffer from is absolutely amazing, and without this as a tool to do that, the impact, it wouldn't have happened. And the impact of this is extremely far-reaching, and it wouldn't have happened without this community. So this community is literally gonna affect a large group of people across this world. And we thank everybody for it.
Well, thank you very much. This is a great honor, and I know my name's right there, but I don't deserve this at all. My three partners, Jeff, Ringo, and Daniel, are the ones that really made this all happen and are the magic behind what happened here. In addition, we had almost 200 different companies from Las Vegas, all donating their services and products to this very worthwhile cause. We had over 3,200 volunteers, and those are just the ones that we could accommodate. We had many more we had to turn away, because there was so much demand. So clearly, it shows that there are a lot of very giving and generous people in Las Vegas, none of whom, at the beginning, knew the Certa family, just wanted to do the right thing. And of course, after they met Chuck and Terry and Molly and Maggie, we're very glad that they participated, and I think all of us have fallen in love with the Certas. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's great. Great for Las Vegas. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And that little fellow's still good. That's a very good thing. I think I scared him. Okay, it is amazing. Okay, for our next item, I'd like to ask the Executive Director of the Las Vegas Clark County Library District, Dan Walters, to join us at the podium. The library district is celebrating Reading Las Vegas, its eighth annual program that brings adults together to celebrate the power and passion of reading. On behalf of the entire City Council, I'd like to proclaim April as Reading Las Vegas Month in Las Vegas, and we encourage everyone to read for pleasure and education. I know that the council members and myself are spending some wonderful time in the present and coming weeks, going to the schools, reading to the youngsters there, emphasizing how important it is that they learn how to read, because once you know how to read, you could do anything. If your toilet breaks, you can get a book and figure out how to fix the toilet, which is an amazing thing. And I'm talking to the young folks right here. I hope you read all the time, because the more you read, the smarter you'll be, and the further you'll go, and it's a beautiful thing. So Dan, can you tell us more about the program?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Every spring and April, we start our, this is our eighth time in a row for our Reading Las Vegas program, where we have literally thousands of people participate in programs around the district. We, in the past, have concentrated on one book, but this year, really in keeping with the subject this morning, we're opening the topic broadly to green and environmental issues. And we have a reading list, which our staff will pass around. We have a number of notable author visits, including David Guderson, who wrote Snow Falling on Cedars. Later in the month, and we have this reading list, and for, there will be book discussion groups at all of our branches. And for the first who come in to participate, we have our annual book bag, which is paid for by our library foundation, so participants who get to the library early can partake in that. And we are so grateful for the city's support and always the boosting on how important it is to read and how it is the one blessing you can have with you for your whole life. And we thank the city for, and your leadership, Mr. Mayor, for all of this support.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Here's the proclamation. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Do you have a couple extra bags with you?
We do.
Okay. I'd like the Certa children to get a bag before they go home, okay?
What happened to the books you brought us?
It's the economy.
You didn't return that book?
You have a fine, councilman.
A huge fine.
You don't have books until you pay your fines.
Very good. Okay, for our next item, we're gonna proclaim April as American City Quality Month, and I'm gonna ask Margot Wheeler, our Director of Planning and Development, to join us up here. This annual event strives to raise public awareness about the status and future of American cities and promote better decisions to improve our nation's cities. So Margot, can you please tell us about this year's effort?
Thank you, Mayor. The American City Quality Foundation was founded in 1995 for the purpose of increasing awareness about the importance of public planning decisions in improving city quality. Each year, they do, in April, have a recognition of a certain theme, and this year's theme is greater support for better quality planning and action. I am pleased to sit on the National Board of the Foundation, as I am pleased to work every two weeks with the wonderful planning commission that we have here in the city, appointed by the mayor and the city council. And I would like it, Mayor, if we could recognize them at this time.
Please call them up.
We have the Chairman, Glenn Trowbridge, and Commissioner Byron Goines, our longest-serving member, and Commissioner Vicki Quinn, Commissioner Keane Ellsworth, and Vice Chairman Rick Truesdale, Steve Evans, and Michael Buckley had other commitments this morning and are not able to join us. Chairman, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on the planning commission, and I'm honored to have been the chair for the last year. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the fine work of the city planning staff and the wonderful working relationship we have with the city council in making Las Vegas an even better place to live on each and every vote we take.
Thank you very much. And these folks really go way beyond the call of duty. When they meet, their meetings last a long, long time. They get very little public thanks for what they do, but the bottom line really is, they are the buffer. Our meetings will last for about five days, each meeting, if it were not for their good work and the fact that they screen and they make developers and neighbors sit down together and to be able to work out issues before they even come to us. And I thank you each and every council meeting for the work that you do, because it's really remarkable. And as a result of your good work, we are able to pronounce this month as America City Quality Month in the city of Las Vegas, and ask all of our citizens to promote better city planning and development to enhance the quality of life in southern Nevada and all of America's finest cities. So, Ms. Wheeler, this is for you to share with these good lady and gentleman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. For our next item, Councilman Barlow is gonna recognize a very special young lady for her community service. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the delight and honor to recognize a young lady today who is outstanding, outstanding in many ways. She is a young person that learned very early, at a very early state in her life, that it's about giving, giving back to the community, and that is exactly what she will be recognized here for today. Would you all just roll the tape while I provide you with background in regards to the recipient here today? Today, I would like to recognize a young lady who believes in the spirit of giving. I'm sorry? Oh, there's no music. There's no music. Okay, giving back, and she has taken her vision to the homeless on the streets here in the city of Las Vegas. Sandra Scroggins, please come forward. I'm sorry, Scoggins, come forward. Did I say it right? Scroggins, come forward, please. Let's give her a round of applause as she come forward. You can come and stand right here. Turn around right here. I just wanna provide the audience with some background information on the wonderful job that you have done here in the Las Vegas community. Sandra has a huge compassion and a huge heart for giving. One day, she was riding in the car with her father, observing the homeless as they walked and lied on the sidewalk. She saw that many of them were barefooted and had shoes with holes in them. That's right, don't listen to the mayor. She saw them barefooted and with shoes with holes in them. The empathy in her heart led her to ask her father, "Dad, is there something we can do to help them?" She then began to immediately collect blankets, coats, and shoes for the homeless. Her main focus was now focusing, her main focus now is on shoes, which basically started the conception, Shoes for the Homeless, which evolved from her community philanthropy. Sandra goes into the neighborhoods and knocks on doors, asking for shoe donations. She then sets up shop near the homeless shelter and distributes shoes to the homeless. Sandra has touched many lives with her spirit of kindness. The homeless are overjoyed by the caring heart coming from such a young soul. She has had several stories written about her, KVBC, Channel 3 News, radio station, Hot 97.5, and The Urban Voice, Mr. Joe Abram, who is here today. And thank you so much for the coverage that you do with The Urban Voice throughout the city of Las Vegas and in particular Ward 5. So thank you for your outreach in that respect, Mr. Abram. Sandra's project has also been endorsed by Angela and Vanessa Simmons, owners of Pastry Shoes Incorporated. This young lady deserves the highest recognition, and I strongly support your vision. So with that being said, I would like to congratulate you and present you with this certificate of accommodation today. And we recognize you as a Las Vegas mayor and city council for your great community outreach, and thank you for giving back, because keep in mind that it's really all about giving, because the more you give, the more God will continue to give to you. So thank you so much for all that you do for this community. I would like for you to say a few words.
I wanna say thank you to my parents for helping me make this possible. Thank you.
Where are the parents at? Come forward, parents. Come forward. And this is for you as well. There we go. And this is for you as well, all right? This is just a small token of our appreciation for the wonderful job that you're doing in the community. Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You wanna pull it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. They explained it during my briefing. It's not a big deal, but that's fine. All right. Folks, we're gonna call item number 10, Approval of the Final Minutes by Reference of the Regular City Council Meeting of March 4th, 2009. Mayor Protem? What's your? I knew you'd say that. That was an April Fool's joke. All right. Item number nine, Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 49, Bill Number 2009-9, SSB held in abeyance until our April 15, 2009 meeting. Are there any other items at this time? Hey, then, Your Honor, I'd like to motion to bring this item forward for pre-action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carriers, thank you. Item number 10 is Approval of the Final Minutes by Reference of the Regular City Council Meeting of March 4th, 2009.
Yes, Your Honor. No addition or demission. I'd like to motion for approval of the minutes.
You are?
Yes.
I'll need a abstain from that, as I was not present for the last meeting. This is the fourth? Okay. I rescind that. I will be voting.
All right. Very good. All right, let's vote, please. Motion carriers, thank you. Items 11 through 31 are considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the department and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to bring item number 11 forward.
All right, we'll bring 11 forward. Any other items? All right, Mayor Protem?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to motion to approve items 12 through 31 with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carriers, thank you. Item number 11 is Approval of the First Amendment to Parking License Agreement between Nevada Ready Mix Corporation and the City Parkway 4A to provide for a rent commencement extension on certain real property located on the northeast portion of 301 West Mesquite Avenue. This is in Ward 5. Mr. Adams?
Good morning. Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. This item is an amendment to our agreement, our parking license agreement with Nevada Ready Mix. They had, and I'm gonna put on the overhead here, get that blown up, shot of the site. We were renting a portion of a site that we own, that you own as a city, through an affiliate corporation, City Parkway 4A Corporation, for the storage of cement trucks to support the Nevada Ready Mix operation, which is right close to this site. The original agreement called for rent to start very shortly upon completion of a number of permits and approvals they needed to actually ready the site to store the vehicles, to, they had to put a drive apron in, move the median, so, put a cut in the median, so you could actually get in to this site on Bonanza. And they're not ready to store trucks at this time, so in exchange for the start of rent, this amendment simply defers rent for a year in exchange for the making 100% of the cost of the improvements. The original agreement called for us to split those improvements, because there was gonna be some residual benefit to the city as a result of making those improvements. In this case, they're gonna make those improvements in exchange for us deferring rent for about a year. And we do have representatives from Nevada Ready Mix here.
Very good. Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, William Stoddard Jr. of the Law Firm of Albright Stoddard Wernicke and Albright, 801 South Rancho Drive, and I'm here on behalf of Nevada Ready Mix Corporation. Representative Larry Miller of the company is also here with me as well.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions, and thank you for that clarification. Looking at the map, I inadvertently took the other Mesquite, so I knew about the Bonanza and Mesquite, so thank you for that clarification.
Just make a side comment. This project would ultimately benefit us if we get the curb cuts, the median improvements. Once they leave the site and we wanna start using the site for storage or whatever else we wanted, those residual improvements, those improvements residually benefit the city.
Correct.
Mr. Stoddard, how's my friend Vern Albright?
He's doing really well, still working about three days a week.
All right, tell him I said my best.
I will.
He's a good friend.
Absolutely.
All right, let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Motion carriers, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 32 is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1516, Fremont Street Maintenance District, from Las Vegas Boulevard to 8th Street, and this is in Ward 5. Mr. Savantes?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. How can I assist you, Department of Public Works? This is a public hearing on the final assessment rule for the general maintenance of the Fremont Street pedestrian improvements. Costs will be recovered through annual assessments, which will be paid each year in four substantially equal quarterly installments of principal without interest.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Savantes at this time? Right hearing night, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Okay, before we vote, this is a public hearing. It would like to be heard. We don't need a motion, okay? Anyone would like to be heard? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 33 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of vacant or abandoned dangerous building located 222 West Van Buren Avenue in the amount of $3,613.75, and assess a maximum of $34,050 in daily civil penalties. The property is owned by Johnny C. Blankenship. It's in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response.
Good morning.
The purpose and background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation-
It's not up on the screen. There we go.
Neighborhood Service declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Weaver Construction, Inc. to remove trash debris, dry dead vegetation, board up all openings to city of Las Vegas specification, and posted signs and trimmed bushes. To date, there have been six inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property, based on the sale date of January 2003, was $55,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include $1,685, for work completed by Weaver Construction, Inc., in addition to other fees, for a total of $3,600. of $3,613.75, and consider assessing a maximum of $34,050 in daily civil penalties.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Smith? Folks, it's a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard. Is the property owner here? Mr. Blankenship? All right, does anyone like to be heard? If seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilor Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, number one, I wish the property owner were here because there's a number of properties, um, specifically in the West Las Vegas community that are, um, not only blighted but abated. And, um, and, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for, um, you and your staff's due diligence in boarding these buildings up because, um, a lot of the buildings are becoming, um, habitats for, um, individuals that should not be inside of these homes doing negativity. And so, um, I just wish that the property owner were here because I would, I would love to have spoken to him. But being that he's not, I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation to fine the property in the amount of $34,050 for the daily civil penalties and, um, also in the amount of $3,613.75 for, uh, the hard cost, um, assessment and fees back to the city. That would be my motion at this time.
Mayor Goodman, I'm sorry.
Before we vote, may I just ask a question, Councilman? I want to make an observation, if you will. We've had no contact with this property owner whatsoever. Isn't that right? Because I think in, in our last meetings, we've drawn a comparison between certain property owners that try and work with us.
Correct.
Uh, versus a property owner that ignores all of our attempts for purposes of how much of a fine we should levy.
They accepted the first notice that we sent them certified mail, and then after that, they refused all of their services.
Okay, thank you.
And, and how many, how many services after that point? Because Councilman Wilson brings up a very valid point.
We have two, two additional after the.
And what were the dates between, start from the first through the last notification so that we can identify the amount of time that we've, uh, allowed between each notification?
There actually is no date on the card for some reason, but the second attempt and the third attempt was August and September.
So roughly 30 days apart?
Prob, probably 30 days apart, yes.
Okay. Then that would be my motion at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carriers, thank you. Item 34 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of dangerous building demolition located at 312 West Van Buren Avenue in the amount of $6,978.25 and assess a maximum of $53,500 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is Philip Hooker et al., care of D. Goldsmith, and this is in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devon Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Service declared this property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Baldwin Development to demolish the structure in compliance with Clark County health regulations. Removing refuse waste and no trespassing, no dumping, no vehicle signs on site. On September 4, 2008, an asbestos survey was conducted by Cam Air. On October 8, 2008, City of Las Vegas Rapid Response Team removed refuse waste, trash debris, and litter. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The original construction year was 1949, and the value of the property is not available. Recommendations is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include $4,950 invoice to Baldwin Development Services, $725 invoice for Cam Air asbestos survey, and a $320 invoice for the City of Las Vegas Rapid Response Team Services, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $6,978.25, and consider assessing a maximum of $55,000 or $53,500 in daily civil penalties.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions to Mr. Smith? Folks, is the owner, Mr. Hooker, here? Public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilor Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Smith, what level of communication have we had with Mr. Hooker or any representative from, from this, uh, location at 312 West Van Buren Avenue?
Again, we have, one, two, three, four, five, five, um, certified letters. One was accepted in September of 2008, and the rest have, have come back unaccepted.
And the dates, if you will?
This would be, the last, uh, was March of '09. Let's see, March 10th of this year, um, March 12th of this year, September 22nd of last year, and September 29th of last year.
Right, and, and it's very important that I point out the dates that, um, the city, uh, gives ample opportunity for the property owners or their designee to be in contact with us because so often, my office receives calls in regards to addressing abated, uh, homes, specifically with the number of foreclosures that have taken place throughout the Las Vegas Valley and throughout the U.S. in particular, uh, but more so in, um, in this particular area of town in which I represent, um, there's a number of homes that are completely vacant, and, um, and they must be boarded up. And I, of course, um, make it my point to get out in, 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 through your office and reach out to the property owner to see if they will work with us. And being that they have not, then we have no other, uh, alternative but to basically take the, um, this item into our control to basically protect the community and the residents, uh, in these communities. And so with that, um, I support staff's recommendation, uh, to, uh, re, to, um, assess a, the penalty of $6,978.25 returned to the general fund, and also the assessed value of $53,500 in daily civil penalties. And that will be my motion at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carriers, thank you. Item 35 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of dangerous building demolition located at 513 North 13th Street in the amount of $6,711 and assess a maximum of $150,050 in daily civil penalties. The property owner is 513 North 13th LLC, care of M. Demich, and this is in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devon Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Service declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Level X Incorporated to demolish the structure to compliance with Clark County regulations. Remove refuse waste, high dry dead vegetation, and post no trespassing, no dumping, no vehicle signs on site. On August 19, 2008, an asbestos survey was conducted by Cam Air. To date, there have been 13 inspections conducted at this location. The va, the value of the property, based on the sale date of December 2005, was $230,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include $4,575 invoice for Level X Incorporated services and $525 invoice for Cam Air asbestos survey, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $6,711, and consider assessing a maximum of $150,050 in daily civil penalties.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Smith?
Yes, Your Honor. I, I'm looking in the backup, and I noticed that on February 3rd of '09, there's a notation, received email from Mike Demich, and that's the property owner, stating he made a $500 payment and has not received a response for his request to make payments to prevent daily civil penalty assessment. Did we receive a $500 payment? And, I mean, this is a communication from the property owner, just to, you know, make a distinction between the last couple. And does he have a desire to work with us, or do we know his position at this time?
Uh, uh, I, I'm going to do it.
I'm here to represent the LLC.
No problem, I'm going to call on you in a moment.
Maybe that's a question.
And, uh, we'll, we'd be happy to hear from you, believe me.
I don't show that any payments have been made. Um, that, that may be a mistake on our part, but I do not show that, that the payment was actually made.
You see the email entry that I'm talking about? Okay, perhaps this lady.
All right, and the record should also reflect. I don't know whether everybody got it in their backup, but, um, on March the 31st, that was yesterday, at about a quarter to four in the afternoon, a letter was sent. Did you get that letter, uh, which was sent to our city clerk from Mr. Demich?
I did not.
All right, basically, um, it says, uh, as we discussed yesterday, we put together a summary of why we're asking for civil penalties to be waived for the above property. The following may be copied and presented to the council. I will be there to represent the 513 N13 LLC tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. Thank you for your help. And attached there, too, is a rather detailed, uh, statement concerning, uh, prior events that took place concerning this property and the issues that are before us today. May I ask, Councilor Barlow, have you seen that, by any chance?
No, I have not, Mayor.
You know, um, it, it could be relevant. Uh, Ms. Bridges, did, uh, was this placed in all of our files?
Yes, and it was sent out late yesterday afternoon.
Okay, I, I did not receive it other than this morning in my, in my folder. Um, I, I think it's important that the council read this, so, uh, it may have some bearing on, uh, the, the issue. But in the meantime, uh, it is a public hearing, and I believe somebody's here representing the property owner. Are you, ma'am?
Yep.
All right, why don't you come up, tell us who you are, and we'd be happy to hear from you.
My name is Lynette Martin. I live in San Diego County. I work for one of the partners of the LLC. The other partner is a Las Vegas resident. We're asking that the fees be waived because we were advised in January of '08 that the property would be torn down in February. We tried to get bids for the work. They ranged from $8,000 to $20,000. This, what the city was going to pay was less. We were amazed when we were notified in April that we still hadn't performed. We didn't have the means to do it. We had no response from the partner here. We did everything for the city that we, was requested of us over, after the fire in '07. I've been in constant contact with Lynn, what is her, uh, Lynn at the city? Ne, Nehepali?
Okay.
Many emails, many phone calls, trying to find out what, what we could do, what else we could do to help. In September, we were notified again that it still hadn't, or it was supposed to be demolished again in September. We, all, last year, we kept thinking the property was going to be demolished, and we would get a bill and pay the bill. And nothing happened until, uh, November, I think, was when it was finally demolished. And then we received the bill with additional city fees of $150,000. The property, he owes more than three times the amount that the property is probably worth at this point. And if they assess, if you assess the other $150,000, he's just going to have to walk away from the property. I can pay more than half of the $6,711 that's owed, and we can pay off the rest of it by the end of the year, but not if we're charged another $150,000.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Do you have any comments with that? That, it would appear that's consistent with the letter that we received.
Well, just for the record, we started making contact with the company in Janu, certified letters, again, uh, emails, starting January '08, and our last attempt was February of '09. It was our last attempt to try to get them to resolve this. So over a year's period of time, we were sending, sending certified letters posting the property. I even have in my backup here that we sent, uh, on 3/11/08, email sent to Mike Demich with pictures and reminder that the demo order was for 60-day extension. Call back 3/26, and we had no response back on that.
The 60-day extension was denied.
And that is per the officer that was handling the property.
All right, but basically, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry. In the meantime, we kept saying, demolish it, we'll pay for it. We're in San Diego, we can't get anything done in Las Vegas from San Diego.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
Mr. Smith, well, we demolished the property, correct?
Correct.
And what did it cost us to demolish the property?
Uh, the total was $6,711.
$6,000?
That was, that was everything. The invoice for the, uh, to Level X was $4,575, and then Cam Air for the asbestos survey was $525, and then our other 15%, and the normal reinspection fees comes to a total of $6,711.
Okay, uh, Mayor, then my motion right now would be to, um, recoup the $6,711 for, um, for this property, and, um, that would be my motion.
All right, thank you. Before we vote on that, it's a public hearing, if anybody else would like to be heard?
Can I make a comment, Your Honor?
Yes, Councilor.
Um, I'm looking at 101 actions taken by city staff to get your attention to address this building. That's taxpayer money that has been spent on your pro, this property already from, the actions from his staff, and that's what I'm mostly concerned about. And I want to make comment about that because it's costing the taxpayers money for these abandoned properties and these abandoned buildings. That big price tag of the civil penalties and that sort of thing certainly has your attention. You know, $6,700 to the demo of the building, you could have done that months ago. So I'm just, I, I don't understand how could, how this could happen, regardless of what the property value is now and what it is, how upside down he's in on the property. That's not really the issue. The issue is here, how do we get the attention of some of these property owners? You and your department are doing everything you can, certified letters, phone calls, inspections, and then I'm looking at 101 actions by your office to get their attention to, to deal with this property. I don't know what to say. I'm just a little upset about the fact that you had to spend so much time and your staff so much time to get their attention to get this done.
May I say that we really depended on our partner here in the city to be taking care of this property and communicating with us. The first papers, I think, that were delivered to the LLC went to a street address, which we don't have street at delivery, but she had set up the LLC with his street address instead of the P.O. box. So I know that for a couple of months, we didn't get the papers. I personally, I'm in the office 40 hours a week, and never saw 100, uh, contacts about it, but we did the board up twice, we did air quality, we did, posted signs, we did everything that we could on our end, and it was just the failure of the property manager and the partner here that put us in the spot.
May I respond, Your Honor?
Certainly.
I understand that, and it may be time to look for a new partner, but it's still unacceptable here in the city of Las Vegas. And we've made that message clear over the past several years with abandoned properties and, and homes and buildings. I mean, how much taxpayer money do we have to spend on these buildings and these properties? How much before we just say, hey, get a loader out there and tear this dang thing down? Um, and, and save us the grief? I don't know what the right answer is here, but, um, what's done is done, and it, it's, it's unfortunate.
What's the name of your partner up here? So we'll be looking for him or her next time?
Liz Thompson.
Say it again?
Liz Thompson. She's a real estate broker.
Okay, well, maybe Ms. Thompson, uh, having her name broadcast on, uh, the TV program, uh, will call us and explain why she didn't, uh, pay some attention to us because, uh, we, we don't forget, we've got long memories. All right, there's a motion.
Mayor Goodman, I'm sorry. Just for clarification, ma'am, did you say that you were told by the city that the property was going to be demolished?
Yes, in February of '08.
Okay, do you have that in writing?
Yes.
I'd just be curious to see, uh, what she has in writing.
I had a 10-day notice, this is dated January 17th, to perform where the city would take care of it.
Why don't you show it to Mr. Smith?
Well, I have a copy of that.
Okay, I mean, my, here's, here's my, my observation, I guess. If, I'm trying to play devil's advocate here. If, if I'm a property owner and I get a notice that the property's going to be demolished, my thinking might be that certainly I have to pay certain fees for the demolition, but it's going to be demolished, so I really don't have to do anything. When the bill comes, I pay it. Is that an unreasonable reliance on her part? But then it wasn't demolished for months and months and months and months. Is that what you're saying?
Right. Yes.
And the reason that is, is we did the original posting of the 10-day before abatement. Then the property owner did start doing some of the work to start cleaning, start boarding, so we extended it out, and we kept trying to work with them. And I've got several, uh, comments in here where we actually were in contact with Lynette from the company, and they, we have different people that are stating they were the reps for the company. So we, the last. last thing we want to do is go out and demo the building if a property owner, and they, we have in our notes that they wanted to attempt to rehab the building. So the last thing we want to do is go out and demo it if they are working to try to accomplish their goals. But when it gets to a point that we see it's not moving forward, like we said, then we take our action, and at that time, we again send another 10-day saying, okay, you're out of time, we are now going to move forward with the original action. So that's sometimes why it takes a period of time.
Now, I think I have the clearest picture. It sounds to me like the city did everything they could, but it was a communication problem on your end. Two or three different hands in the pot.
Sorry, you're way ahead.
No, the--
No, 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 you're way ahead. Let us vote. You're way ahead. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Bye.
Item 36 is a hearing to consider the appeal regarding the 10-day vacate nuisance notice in order to comply located at 824 Langstreet Drive. The property owners are Nolea J. Velasco, and this is in Ward 5.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devon Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background of the subject property was determined to be a public nuisance as defined in Las Vegas Municipal Code Title 904.020, dealing with public nuisances in Section 202 of the Uniform Housing Codes. A 10-day notice to vac, a 10-day vacate notice in order to comply was mailed to the property owner to correct the public nuisance as defined in the Las Vegas Municipal Code. A copy of the notice was also posted on the property. Today's hearing is to consider the appeal of the 10-day notice to vacate in order to comply filed by Neola Velasco, owner and responsible party. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the 10-day vacate notice in order to comply.
All right, any questions to Mr. Smith? Is the property owner here? Nolea J. Velasco?
Your Honor, just for the record, we have been in contact with her, and she did not wish to pull her appeal, but she also stated to us she would not show up.
Okay, well, that's her choice. Right, that's, we could go forward, Councilor Barlow, if you're willing.
Was that by way of phone call? Was that by way of email?
By way of phone call. We've had several, the property's now vacant, nobody's in it, and all that we're asking is--
Is the property boarded and secure?
No. All we're asking is that she keep it clean and not allow anybody to move in until the violations are corrected.
Okay, then my motion would be for the City Council to approve the 10-day vacate notice.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Item 37 is discussion and possible action concerning the status of the 2009 legislative issues. Mr. Perigo.
Mayor and Council, Tom Perigo, Planning and Development Department, filling in for Mr. Knight.
Yes, excuse me. Sperger.
Yes, Your Honor. I'm filling in for Chris Knight, and Chris, if you're listening, I wish you a very speedy and healthy recovery. We're in Week 9 of the 70, tried not to emphasize speedy. We're in Week 9 of the 75th Legislature. The legislature is in full swing with over 1,000 bills in play right now. Roughly half of those are of interest to the city. A quick update on the bills that the city is sponsoring, AB 44. The lobby team is working with Chairwoman Kirkpatrick, who's the Chair of the Government Affairs, Assembly Government Affairs. This is the one revising provisions governing local government stabilization funds. AB 48, the bill did pass out of committee. This is the one that allows local governments to resolve construction contract disputes by processes other than arbitration. And AB 94, there's no movement on that bill. That's the one that would eliminate the sunset date on the Tourism Improvement District. A couple other bills of interest, SB 224, City Attorney Brad Jurvik testified on last week in opposition because the proposed legislation would not allow public boards to take action by a vote of less than a majority of all the members of the body. AB 442 prohibits government agencies from spending money on lobbying activities. SB 294 is another bill that would affect the allocation of local government tax distributions. We're watching that one closely. Finance has estimated that that may cause the city up to $500,000 a year. AB 397, this bill authorizes redevelopment agencies to spend money on schools within the redevelopment area. It's enabling only. SB 294 is a C-tax bill. The sponsor, Senator Lee, asked the Senate Taxation Committee to refer the bill to the Senate Legislative Operations, where he can ask for an interim study. And then Speaker Buckley's redevelopment area bill, AB 458, is scheduled for a hearing this Friday at 8:00, Assembly Ways and Means. Mr. Van Gorp has been up in Carson City this week, working on that bill. With all the bills that are in play, there are staff from all of the city departments doing reviews and analysis. There are staff who have been making presentations, testifying on bills up in Carson City here locally, and working with committees on this legislation. And in my one week filling in for Mr. Knight, I can see that the city's well represented with very talented staff looking out for the city's interests and helping legislators understand how those bills might impact the city's interests. So if there are any questions that you have, I will make sure to get answers to you today from the lobby team, or if there's any direction you'd like to provide them, I will give that to them today as well.
What was the last thing you said, Mr. Perigo?
Actually, there's one more bill that I think--
Now, what's the last thing you said?
The last thing I said was that if there's, if you have any questions on any of the legislation, I will get answers for you today. And if there's any direction you'd like to give the lobby team, I will make sure to get that to them today as well.
Let me ask you, who's going to be representing the city on the Speaker's bill on Friday during the hearing?
We're, Mayor, we're going to have a discussion this afternoon about our strategy to deal with that bill, and we're asking for some assistance from our bond counsel.
Okay.
So we'll catch up with you later this afternoon, so we can get ready for Friday.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Your Honor, there was one more bill I wanted to mention. AB 256 revises dates for certain elections, and Mayor Protem testified on that bill yesterday.
How did he do?
I didn't watch the hearing, sir.
How did he do?
He did great, sir.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Perigo? All right, thank you very much. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor, move to accept the report.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perigo.
Your Honor, I didn't get a standing ovation, but they said thanks.
Well, that's, that's better than it could have been. Item 38 is discussion and possible action regarding a Second Amendment to amended and restated disposition and development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and the Urban Chamber of Commerce for a 3.44-acre site in the Las Vegas Enterprise Park on the southwest corner of Mount Moriah Drive and Martinell King Boulevard for the development of a multi-use business incubator and services center. This is in Ward 5. Mr. Adams?
Good morning. Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. This is a, a Second Amendment to the disposition and development agreement that we have between the city and the Urban Chamber respecting a 3.4-acre site in Enterprise Park that the Urban Chamber is planning to build their new facility on. I have on the overhead, an overhead view of the Enterprise Park, and in the center of that is the citing at issue. The current development agreement called for them to have commencement of construction on March 1st. We're recommending that this date be pushed back to June 1st. And as I stated in briefing, that it, it does a couple things. It really allows us to work on what we think is a much bigger project. We've been working with the councilmen, Senator Horford, and other parties on a bigger project that would allow for the use of the Green Jobs Bill funding that would be funneled through the state to create a job training facility there in lieu of the Urban Chamber facility, working with the local construction trades council, the JATC. And at the same time, we would look at possibly moving the Urban Chamber from that site over to possibly take a position in operating under a license agreement with the city, the current city business incubator. These are obviously big projects. This would become a much bigger project for Enterprise Park and the community than just simply doing the Urban Chamber project. It would allow us to maintain the $2 million EDA grant that the Urban Chamber was successful in securing, but at the same time, really get our incubator back into the incubator business, and really maybe even make a tie between incubating businesses there and creating green jobs out of the green jobs incubator. So, I mean, of the JATC facility on the former Urban Chamber site. I think one of the things we're going to be very careful of in this process is to make sure we don't lose our rights as a city and the property. We, we, because of this agreement, have the right to reenter the site through the failure to nonperform. And so we're going to be looking very carefully at this process to make sure that the gap funding that's needed to build this building's in place before we relinquish those rights. And the other thing that, that has been asked of us up to this point, the EDA would want us to subordinate our interest in the agreement to EDA, because they're providing $2 million of funding. We've been unwilling to do that because we haven't seen where the rest of the money was going to come from. So we're also going to look at that very carefully, make sure the rest of this money is in place before we subordinate any interest to the EDA as well. So we have some points in the process where we still believe we maintain control in terms of the property and our interest in Enterprise Park, and I certainly wanted that stated for the record. But we, at the same time, see the vision and the opportunity that presents itself of creating a much, much bigger project for the community than what we're, than what we were looking at before with just simply the Urban Chamber going forward with our building. So with all those considerations, that is the motivation, the reason for the delay, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Adams, or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Scott, are you still with us?
I am, thank you. Like, what's the reality of June 1, and that there's going to be a performance, number one?
Well, you know, in technically--
In this market?
Technically, it's, it's 90 days, because there's a 30-day cure period, a notice, a default period at the end of 60 days that they, we, we can find them in default then June 1st, but still have another 30 days. So we technically have 90. It's going to be a push. You know, I think it's, all we're, what we're looking at in terms of documents are an assignment of the current development agreement to the Apprenticeship Training Council. They have a very good track record of building, training buildings, by the way. I mean, if you've ever been to their complex, they, there's a whole bunch of them there. So we feel very confident they're going to be able to deliver. And then the other piece is some form of license and operating agreement that's performance-based for the Urban Chamber to step into the existing incubator facility.
And the incubator space is, as you know, you know my attitude about that, is I think we have to keep a close watch--
Yes.
--on that. And because I don't think the Urban Chamber is really a property manager in any way, and you're almost going to have to manage, manage it over the top of them.
Yes, and we, we recognize that. Clearly, that's when we're, we will have to incubate the Urban Chamber--
That's right.
--to be in the incubation business. But I think as a community, we have to start somewhere in this business. I, I think I mentioned to you, I personally have been involved in the past in other places in operating incubators, understand how they work, the pitfalls and the, and the possibilities involved in doing that, and clearly, we're going to have to take a hard look at this and manage this process all the way through it. But I think there's a huge upside here from an economic development standpoint. You know, there, there's a big upside in building a green jobs training facility and utilizing the new stimulus funding, which $38 million will come to the state of Nevada in that pot alone. So there's, we're on the, the head of the curve in terms of getting access to those funds. But in the, in the same token, I think, creating, getting back into the, a real incubation program and tying it to Enterprise Park is also a very positive thing as well. So there are things that really are merit-worthy, it's things that we should be looking at and doing, and obviously, we've got to manage that process.
As long as you use your experience to watch, that's fine.
Yes. I have actually, we've, we've gotten, I've already, from some of my prior places, got policies and procedures, provided those to the Urban Chamber, and really ahead of the curve in terms of really getting our arms around what's it's going to take to, to properly operate this facility as a true incubator. And I would caution you, they don't make money. You know, that, they are, they're, they're a true economic development project, and they're, they're all about giving companies the boost they need to get off and running and stand on their own two feet. And we hope when they stand on their own two feet, they'll move into Enterprise Park as part of that. So that's the vision that we're trying to create here.
Before I ask Councilman Barlow for his, his motion, do we have any kind of a list or any data about the success of our incubator program from its inception as to what companies were incubated and what their current status is?
We could certainly, yeah--
Can we do that, please? I'd like, I'd like to see that if possible. Thank you. How's it going?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before Councilman Barlow proceeds, I want to make comment about the training facilities and your comments about them here in the city of Las Vegas. They are by far the most state-of-the-art training facilities in, on the West Coast, and that's significant to recognize. Ms. Adams, this is the property that will be doing this with the Electrical Joint Apprenticeship Council, am I correct?
The JATC, that's correct.
And that's significant in its own right. As you know, the Electrical JATC currently is in Councilman Reese's Ward, Mayor Protem's Ward, and that, too, is a state-of-the-art facility. And as we move forward as a city to, to promote and enhance some green energy jobs especially, and reaching into the neighborhoods and the communities that do it, that is, that is a significant step in the right direction. So basically, what I'm doing is stating my support for. However, I must disclose that I am a member of the IBW, and therefore, for the vest, and the abundance of caution, will be abstaining from voting on this matter.
Thank you. Councilor Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Scott, for laying out the foundation of, of this great development we're trying to accommodate in the Enterprise Park. The Enterprise Park, as far as its background of history, was created and devised to create jobs, to create opportunity for small businesses through our incubator facility out on Stella Lake. We all know that the incubator development had its small successes. However, it has not lived up to its full potential in the sense of being a, a fully operational incubator. And given the opportunity to now pull in the Urban Chamber to this location, it's something that I believe will be not only an asset, but a benefit to the community for this entity will have an opportunity to do what it's designed to do, and that's to provide opportunities for businesses in the community specifically, minority businesses and, and women-owned businesses, small businesses, in order for them to develop and grow into the mainstream. Also, teaming up with a great organization such as the JATC by way of assistance through Senator Stephen Horford in the state, trying to, in my office, we're trying to really develop and, and build the green initiative that has basically been passed down through the Obama administration. And jobs is what we're trying to create, not just part-time jobs, but jobs that will be able to house apprenticeship programs to grow young people in the various trades, bringing it into, the Enterprise Park would be a great asset, because through it, as you laid out, Scott, will give young people an opportunity to learn a trade that they will be able to provide for their families for a very long time. And so I'm supportive of it, and I appreciate all of the assistance that you have provided through this very complex move that we're trying to, trying to accomplish. And I understand that it's, it's not an easy task. However, anything worth having is most definitely worth working for, and that's what I'm trying to do as a representative, is grow this area and bring in quality developments and projects that will sustain the community, not just for today, but for tomorrow and future days to come. So with that, I would like to move to follow the recommendation of, of approval for the item, to be, to extend the, the date until June 1st, 2009, for the Urban Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, that's the motion. Let's vote on it, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 39 is discussion and possible action regarding approval of a new locksmith license for Armor Locksmith LLC. for Armor Locksmith LLC, doing business as Armor Locksmith at 6500 Vegas Drive, Unit 2162. Yair Raphael, the owner, and this is in Ward 5. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a report provided by Metro.
Let me ask you this. Is Mr. Raphael here? Why don't you come up so you could listen to what Mr. DiFiore has to say? Come on, Mr. DiFiore. Why don't you just go up to the mic, please? Thank you.
In your backup, you have a report provided by Metro with several areas of concern, and Sergeant Lowe is here in case you have any questions with regard to that report. My presentation today will try to emphasize some of those concerns that we have for this particular type of business. As you know, a locksmith business is one which, generally speaking, visits outside of a business office, goes out into a home, goes out to a place where an individual may have or be locked out of their car. So, there's a big trust factor in this type of business. The application that was submitted by Mr. Raphael indicates that he only had two months of actual experience in the locksmithing industry. That would be in the spring of 2008. Yet, he has a website currently which indicates that he has over 10 years of experience completed and will get the job completed to your satisfaction. So, there is a, again, that level of trust. When somebody looks at their website, they would feel that they would have a comfort level with 10 years of experience when he has only had two months of training. Subsequently, he also has on that same website numbers for emergency services, one in Las Vegas, one in Clark County, and one in Henderson. In checking the websites for business licensing for all three locations, there is no licenses that have been obtained in those jurisdictions as well. As you know, in the report, there are two addresses that were discovered by Metro when they went through the investigation that he had listed on those particular websites, trailing those back to the actual physical location. One was a Burger King, one was a 7-Eleven. We have heard this story before in the past month and a half. Again, a level of trust, and those addresses were incorrect. I met with Mr. Raphael on March 16 and went over the report with him, gave him an opportunity to discuss some of the concerns that Metro had. When we discussed the addresses that were listed and were not true addresses, his comment to me basically was, "Those are irrelevant." The business that he had worked for and trained for in Tempe, Arizona, does have a physical presence here in southern Nevada, according to the Yellow Pages, according to the website. That business is known as Complete Locksmith. Again, Complete Locksmith has no licenses in the entire valley. Based upon the report, based upon my concerns with Mr. Raphael, I cannot support approval of this particular license. My recommendation there is to deny it.
All right. Any questions to Mr. DiFiore?
Yes, Sheriff. Mr. DiFiore, we recently had another one of these applications before, it's not too long ago, if I recall. Have you seen a rash of these? I mean, I even saw a TV program not too long ago, and of course, you can't believe everything you see on TV, about the same industry having these issues in other municipalities in the country. And I'm just curious, what is your take on this? Why do you think this is occurring?
We have, after the first one, which was about a month and a half ago, we went through the Yellow Pages and went through website advertising. We have a report that's being prepared. It is- it is a valley-wide problem, and it is actually happening in other jurisdictions across the nation. I can't give you a reason why it is happening. Maybe it's because it's an easy business to get into, no overhead costs, and I think that we have a more serious problem long-term than we realize. And I think the third one that we're seeing today is just a symptom of the rest of the problems in the industry. What I intend to do is have my investigator complete that report, submit it to the city attorney's office, for us to review with the city attorney's office what our plan of action could be in this particular industry. I know when we discussed with Mr. Raphael, he said he had a call from a marketer that learned that he was going to go in business, and he relied on the marketer to be able to put his business on the website. And it didn't matter where the addresses were or where the locations were, that the marketer was going to put them wherever he felt was appropriate according to his instructions. I think that we've heard that before with the individuals that we have come before. So, I think not only in the industry is there a problem, I think in the marketing and advertising of these particular businesses, there's a problem, and we'll have to try to address that when we meet with the city attorneys as well.
And if I may, I want to share with the council, yesterday, Mr. DiFiore and I met on another business who- a manufacturer of a certain product actually encouraged entrepreneurs to start their own businesses so they didn't have to pay withholding taxes and workers' comp and licensing fees. And it's not just this industry, it's other industries that are doing this, and we're losing revenue, basically. Forget the deceptive advertising practices, it's the fact that the municipalities are losing revenue for licensing fees, and that's significant. It happens a lot, which it probably does. And you could probably go through the Yellow Pages and, you know, just pick a business to see if they're licensed for crying out loud. But definitely a challenge. Thank you, Mr. DiFiore.
All right. Any other questions to Mr. DiFiore at this time? All right, Mr. Raphael, what do you have to say?
I started the process for the licensing application back in July. The process took almost nine months after I paid all my licensing fees regarding the website and misleading addresses. So, that was a mistake, and I already took them off.
All right. Do you go through training in order to become a locksmith?
Yeah, I was training with a company in Tempe, Arizona.
What is it that you have? You learn on the job type training, or is there a school?
A combination, school and job site.
How much money did you pay for fees while you were going through your licensing process?
I didn't pay any money.
But I thought you said that you started the licensing process. Did you have any fees that you paid to the-
Oh, to the city?
Yes.
I paid $350 for the metro. I think about $80 more for the application. For the fingerprints, about $90. That's it, right? That's about it.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions of the gentleman? All right. Yes?
I'd like to ask the gentleman, is there any reason why your industry seems not to want a permanent office address where a person who uses your services could actually come back and find you? Is there any reason why you don't do that?
I can speak for myself. Maybe I just see it as not as beneficial or cost-efficient to have an office or shop if you can make a living by just operate as a mobile service. So, you don't really need the shop.
You realize that when you come to my house-
Yes.
-you now have access to my house forever until that lock's changed, and I don't know where you are. And that bothers me.
Same as a lot of different industries and companies, but as long as you know the company owner and everything is written down in the Secretary of State, so you always have an address, even if it's my home or shop, it's the same thing.
I can't find you. That's my problem.
If you really want, you can find me.
I can go to Burger King, get a Burger King, but you're probably not there at that time. That's the problem. And this industry has got to wake up to that. And I'm sure that's what Mr. DiFiore is going to find as we go forward. We can't find all of you. So, I'm just putting it out on the record that I think that's a real problem here.
Right? Anything else? Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Raphael. What is the name of the school you attended in Arizona?
It's not a school. It's this company that I was working for. So, they'd been training me for a few months, and then I started working for them.
What's the name of the company?
Complete Locksmith, the best in Arizona. And in Arizona, there is no regulations for a locksmith license. It's not required to have.
And when did you work there?
Dates? Through 2008, beginning of 2008 till, let's say, October 2008.
January, February?
I think he has the dates there.
They say March of 2008 through May of 2008, only a two-month period.
A two-month period.
In Las Vegas, but before that, I was working in Tempe, Arizona.
Well, I'm talking about Arizona. How long did you work in Arizona for the company, Complete Locksmith in Arizona?
Work and train together, about five, six months.
Five to six months, so it was on-the-job training? Is that-
Most of it was, yeah.
And what was the other half?
Excuse me?
What was the other half? If most of it was on-the-job, what was the other portion?
Theory and practical.
Okay. And whereabouts in Arizona? What city?
Tempe, Arizona.
Tempe. What was the reason as to why you were dishonest on your application?
What?
Your application, applying for a business license?
Yes. What's the dishonesty, please?
On your application, or I should say, on your website, I'm sorry, on your website, you stated that you had over 10 years' experience. Explain that to me. Why 10 years?
That was a mistake.
On whose part?
My part.
And what would you attribute that mistake to as far as 10 versus only five months of training?
Again, this is another- it's an advertising, and I didn't thought this is going to come up right now. I don't know if it's relevant right now, to tell you the truth, because it's-
Well, it's relevant-
I feel about like a headhunt that's going on here, that I'm not the only one. And if you bring the yellow book, you'll see 80% of the company is misled in advertising.
Right, but those companies, Mr. Raphael, are not before today asking us for a business license. You are. So, what we have to do is basically address each case on a case-by-case base.
I wasn't aware of that.
So, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of information inside the Yellow Pages that is not accurate, but being that you're applying for a City of Las Vegas license, I'm asking you directly, why would you place a 10-year experience on your website as far as advertising when in fact you have less than a year, not even a half a year, of experience?
Building the website, I'm not the one who did it.
Do you own the business?
I do, yeah.
So, you will be held responsible for everything?
Of course, I'm responsible. That's why I'm here, and not the company who built the website for me, and they put the information in. But it was a mistake, and I already took it off, and I'm sorry for it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Sir, officer, do you have some additional information you would like to bring forward?
Yes, Sergeant Lowe with Metro Special Investigation. This is a Google search from yesterday's date, and it shows Armor Lock with his phone number at 3232 South Las Vegas Boulevard, which is around the Wynn Hotel. And it also still has the same information about him having 10 years' experience on the website, so apparently it wasn't fixed.
So, when did you fix it, Mr. Raphael?
That's with the company name? Can I see it, please?
Yes. It's yesterday's Google search.
Okay, that's not the company name. I don't see the company name.
Is that your phone number, or?
I didn't put it there.
We can't do it this way. We can't ask questions that way. Ask the questions through the-
That's all I have.
I can't explain right now how the internet works. I don't have the knowledge, but based on Google, and there's no regulation for the internet, and everybody can just go there and do whatever he wants, so.
Okay, well, Mr. Raphael, my motion at this time, being that there's a lot of misrepresentation on your part as it relates to your license and who you are and where you are and where you're located, I am very uneasy with moving forward to allow you to have a City of Las Vegas business license for a locksmith. So, my motion at this time will be to deny your application for a locksmith license in the City of Las Vegas. That would be my motion at this time.
All right. There's a motion. Let's vote. Post. Let me ask you a question, Mr. DiFiore. Let's assume that Mr. Raphael leaves here today and looks up a locksmith company in the Yellow Pages that basically used the same modus operandi that he did with the same kind of advertising that he used, and they wanted to hire him. Could they hire him, and he would not necessarily ever come into our system for your review?
He would have to go through a work card requirement, and certainly-
Basically, all that would be, would be to see whether he has a police record, is it not?
Correct.
And if he didn't have a police record, he would be able to work and do the same thing that he's doing today, but not be the boss.
That's likely.
That's what I-
That's correct.
Okay. At least we know where we stand. I think we better start looking into this industry. Thank you, sir. All right. Item 40 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a beer wine cooler off-sale license for Sabah Shashani, doing business as Bell's Market at 720 West Owens Avenue in Ward 5. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a six-month review of the beer wine cooler off-sale license for Bell's Market. There have been nine reviews in the previous five years on this particular location. Let me kind of give a general overview. We did run calls for service. That is in the backup that you have today. The calls for service are just basically a gauge for the council to see the kind of activity and Metro resources that are being expended over a period of time. They are not a true and accurate picture of the problems that may exist at that particular location. For instance, if there is a traffic stop and the traffic stop coincidentally just happens to be at that location, it will show on a calls for service for 720 West Owens Avenue. What we do have, and what we have looked into, are arrests and citations at these locations, and this will be also for the next two items on your agenda. During the previous period of time, for a one-year period, calls for service at this location totaled 120, which were generated by non-Metro personnel. So, an average over a six-month period would be 60. Now, in this last six-month period, the calls for service have been reduced to seven. That is a very significant change in the activity that is occurring at this location, whether it's truly at that location or whether, like I said, it's a vehicle traffic stop. I believe Mr. Shashani, this is Mr. James Shashani and the father, have done a remarkable job in trying to work with Metro and trying to keep the interests of the community together. And there are conditions on the license. There are five conditions on the license that he has been able to comply with over the last several years, as a matter of fact. I believe he may ask today for an extension or an amendment to one of those conditions, and that would be for the hours of operation. Currently, the hours of operation are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. At this point in time, I'm ready to make a recommendation for approval with conditions that we do have in place, and if council is willing to do that, I'll read those conditions as we move forward.
Any questions to Mr. DiFiore before we turn to Mr. Shashani? All right, Mr. Shashani.
Good morning. My name is James Shashani. I'm representing my father, owner of Bell's Market, Sabah Shashani. And we have been working really close with Metro, and we appreciate the help that they give us in the bold and command. We've been working really close with them to get rid of a lot of the problems that we had in the past, and I believe we have accomplished very well that we have gotten rid of a lot of the nuisance people hanging around, drinking around the area, and cleaned it up a lot. And we are asking to lift the condition of the business hours because we are losing money, and we'd like to be open to the regular hours. So, today, we are asking to remove that condition of the limited business hours.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Shashani? All right, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Mr. DiFiore, for the information you shared today, and thank you, Mr. Shashani, for being here on behalf of your father. I do commend you for a job well done as far as being able to move your customers along, those that had a tendency to hang out and loiter in your parking lot. You've cleaned up the landscaping, and I really appreciate that because- You've cleaned up the landscaping, and I really appreciate that, because one of my goals upon taking this seat in this office was to clean up the area. And I need the assistance from the business owners, the residents alike, to clean Ward Five. And that's what the Clean Ward Five is all about, cleaning up all the trash, glass, and debris of the entire area. And I need your support, I need the community's support in order to do that. And as a business owner, I thank you for your assistance in that regard. Also, thank you for participating in the First Tuesday with the Bolden Area Command. That information, the information that you receive from First Tuesday is very helpful to you as a business owner, because now you have an opportunity to develop a relationship with the local law enforcement officers in the area, so that you can continue to run a very safe business, and at the same time, have an opportunity to, to make money. I'm not here to take money away from you. I'm here to basically assist you in growing your business, but doing the right thing at the same time. I attribute the success of, of, of you being able to manage that area due to the decrease hours that was posed on your business, as far as the reduction in hours that we submitted. But I'm willing to open up those hours, adjust the hours from seven a.m. What is family food's hours?
Eleven p.m.
To eleven p.m. What is that, Monday?
Monday through Saturday, ten p.m. on Sunday.
And ten p.m. on Sunday?
Yeah.
Councilman, if I could, if I could read that and correct that?
Read, read that into the record, if you will, Jim.
The family food hours of operation are from seven a.m. to ten p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and from seven a.m. to eleven p.m., Friday and Saturday.
Right. I would be willing to lift those hours. I'll go ahead and lift those hours. However, I truly hope that this isn't, that this doesn't turn around the negative element that existed previous months ago. And hopefully, this message really got to you and your, and your family in the sense of doing the right thing on that corner to keep the loiterers off the property and keep them moving. And you run a very good operation. I've been in there several times, as you know, over the last few months, just popping in to see how things are going, and so, and I appreciate the dialogue that you and I have had an opportunity to share as well, and the relationship that we've been able to build as far as the vision of the area. And so, with that, continue to keep up the good work, and the hours have been read into the record as far as what I agreed to today, and I would like to move to follow those recommendations with the amendment of the adjustment in hours for approval of this item.
Councilman, I think I have to read those into the record, so...
Please, thank you.
The conditions would be, hours of operation would be Sunday through, I'm sorry, seven a.m. to ten p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and seven a.m. to eleven p.m., Friday and Saturday. The licensing must provide security personnel, which is highly visible, by means of identifiable uniform, unarmed, and must obtain and be in possession of a valid work card during employment. Security is to address the parking lot issues during the hours of two p.m. to closing. Condition number two would be to install and maintain video surveillance system to aid in monitoring activity inside and outside the store. Three, to post signs inside and outside the store, which notify patrons of video surveillance system. Four, work with Metro and security to enforce trespassing of undesirables. And five, enforce no loitering and no alcohol consumption within a thousand feet. Having said that, I would...
Do you agree to those conditions, Mr. Shoshani?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with that, that would be my recommendation at this time with the subject amendments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we get to the motion, I just wanted to commend you for the great significance and problems that has decreased in your area. That's not easy to do, and I wish you luck in keeping the same type of situation so they stay decreased in extended hours, but you really did a good job.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Item forty-one is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a package license and a restricted-gain license for Shoshani and Jargis, doing business as Family Food, room and numeral two, at sixteen oh two H Street. And this is in Ward Five. Mr. DiFiore?
Again, Mayor, members of the council, you have a copy of the calls for service in your backup, and there are nineteen calls for service which were non-metro-generated over the last six-month period. Prior to that, there was an average of about seventeen for a six-month period over the last year. I met with Mr. Jargis a week or so ago, and we went over the calls for service. Again, what we were looking at were the, the rest of the citations that were listed on those calls for service. And in just about each case, we found that those were trespassing issues that Mr. Jargis and his employees had taken care of with Metro. There was one jaywalking citation that was issued as a result of an individual who probably crossed the street, not used the, the street area for, for doing that. The same thing applies here. Mr. Jargis, I believe, does have a pretty good working relationship with Bolden Area Command. I believe has attended the First Tuesday meetings with Metro. The, the type of activity is, is, has not diminished, as in the case of Bell's Market, but my recommendation today would be with the same conditions as we just read into the record on Bell's Market, go forward with, with no review unless there are concerns that Bolden Area Command brings to my attention, which I can bring back to the City Council at any time.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. DiFiore? Gentlemen?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, councilmen. Former Jargis from Family Food Two. We've been working hard with Metro, trying to clean that area up very much. I met with Mr. Jim DiFiore, and we provide any assistance needed Metro from us, copy of CD if any problems happen in that area, or something like that. I also met with Sergeant Clemens from the Bolden Station, Police Station, and we, we mentioned about the calls. It was just regular, regular police duties during the, during their routes they do in for the businesses. And the citation, as Mr. Jim DiFiore mentioned, is like just regular things was happening, like cars stationed up, they pull our tickets for the cars, then they give us our address from the station where they park.
All right, thank you very much. Did you want to be heard?
No, just, Salar Shoshani, a partner of Family Food. I just want to say thank you, you know, for giving, if you're a cooperator with us, and Metro, you know, gave us all the information like we needed.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right. Any questions of either gentleman? If not, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for being here today. This is a pretty tough corner. It can be, but with your due diligence and your assistance, I'm constantly working with my office and Metro. I believe that we will turn this corner around. You all have done a yeoman's job, if you will, in regards to keeping the property free and clear of, of loiterers. And also, I thank you for removing the vehicles that were on the side of your building and cleaning up the property as well. I would like, if you will, to request that you all sweep more often on, on your property as far as the trash on the property, but other than that, you all have done a good job, and I do move to support the item today with no further review. And, Mr. DiFiore, would you like to read those?
I will read those into the record. I would like to add, with Bell's Market and with Family Food Two, we have done business license inspections over the previous, past six months, and we have found them each to be in, in compliance with work card, tam card, health card, as well as the presence of security at the time that they're conditioned here in their license. So there have been no business license concerns as well. With that, the, the conditions I'll read into the record are, the hours of operation are from seven a.m. to, to ten p.m., Sunday through Thursday, seven a.m. to eleven p.m., Friday and Saturday. Must hire security personnel, experienced and highly visible by means of identifiable, uniformed, unarmed, and must obtain, be in possession of a valid work card during employment. Security is to address the parking lot issues during the hours of two p.m. to closing. Number two is to install video surveillance system to aid in monitoring activity inside and outside the store. Three, to post signs inside and outside the store, which would, which notify patrons of the video surveillance system. Four, work with Metro and security to enforce trespassing of undesirables. Five, enforce no loitering and no alcohol consumption within one thousand feet.
Do you all agree to those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, also want to thank you for your participation in First Tuesday and having an opportunity to develop a relationship with those officers that patrol this area of the, of the neighborhood. I highly recommend that you continue to attend those meetings, because of the information that you receive from there. It's very helpful to your business, and, and how, in fact, you continue to grow it at the same time. So with that, I would like to move to follow, or move to approve this item with the conditions as amended for approval.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Post? Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item forty-two is discussion and possible action regarding a review of a nonprofit club general license for the IBPO Elks of the World, Tommy J. Stanton, doing business as IPPO Elks of the World at nine oh two West Owens Avenue, and this is in Ward Five. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, in this particular review, the calls for service for the last six-month, no, I'm sorry, one-year period has been forty, which, for a nonprofit club, again, is, is not very significant for that type of business operation. I have had a chance to go over the calls for service with Mr. McCrory, and the ones, again, that we were looking at were any arrests or citations that had been issued to that location. What we did find, through his records, through our records, is that those that were of significance were trespassing of individuals that Mr. McCrory and his staff took care of with Metro. These were individuals that were not members, were not members' guests, but just happened to appear on the property during the club hours of operation. He has had business license inspections here in the last six months, and has been in compliance with business license code requirements. The current hours of operation by condition are twelve noon to twelve a.m., Sunday through Thursday, twelve noon to one a.m., Friday and Saturday. And I would recommend moving forward with the same conditions on the hours of operation for a permanent license with no additional reviews, with the caveat that we can bring these back if Bolden Area Command has concerns about the activity going astray.
All right, very good. Any questions of Mr. DiFiore? Gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
Al McCrory, Exalted Ruler, President of Tommy J. Stanton Elk's Lodge.
Leon White, I'm a member of Tommy J. Stanton Elk's Lodge.
Be happy to hear from you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, we too have been working diligently with the Bolden Area Command personnel. We also attend the First Tuesday and the Tuesday's Business Meeting with the Bolden area. We have seen a significant improvement in, in that area, both across the street from us, at the, at the food markets and the Bell's Market. I do just like to make one indication here. The, the markets across the street, they have, they are diligent in, in trespassing the, the people over there, but they come across the street to our location, and there's a bus stop there at, at the sidewalk. And when we attempt to remove them from the area, they say they are waiting for the bus. We, we call Metro, they tell Metro the same thing, so they're allowed to continue to stay there for a period of time, but Metro has made a, making routine checks that they are there on a second attempt, they move them on. And we realize that the summer months are coming up, and activities such as that increases during the summer months. So I've met with the sergeants over at the Bolden Area Command to put in place some type of problem-solving things, if you will, and, and to head off some of these conditions, some of these things that's gonna occur during the summer months. So we are probably creating a partnership with the Bolden Area Command to prepare for the summer months that's upcoming. The only other thing that we were asked at this time, that the conditions be removed from our license, allows to operate and be governed by the provisions of our privilege liquor license. With, with that, we have no other comments unless Mr. White has a comment.
Well, the only thing I have to say is about the, the lottery. Like I said, they'll go across the street to Bell's or the Family Food, come across to over an hour property. And every time I come into the club, there's bottles, beer-to-beer bottles, liquor bottles, all on the sidewalk. I have to pick them up. And that's why they go across the street and get it, and come over and launder on our property. And we run them away, you know, every time we see them. And every time I come in, that's what I wanted to renovate, when they were saying they cleaned up their property, ran them off, but they came over on our side. So then we get blamed. That's what I wanted to say.
All right. Happy to hear from you. All right, before we have a motion, I am an elk, but I'm not a member of this particular lodge. I don't believe that that would in any way affect my building.
I agree.
All right, Councilman Barlow? You're smiling.
I'm wondering...
You thought I was a moose. I am a moose, too. And I'm an eagle, too, okay? And I'm a mason, too. I'm everything. I couldn't vote on anything if I wasn't allowed to vote.
You're a Shriner, too?
Which one?
You're a Shriner.
I'm a Shriner, too, yes, sir. Excellent. Go ahead, Mr. Councilman Barlow. Stop smiling.
Mr. McCrory?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here today and addressing this council in regards to the activities that have taken place in and around the Elk's Lodge. I've been in constant communication with Mr. DiFiore, Bolden Area Command, and as you know, I've stopped in at your location a few times, just to drop in, to say hello and see how things are going, because I wanted us to have a, develop a relationship to see how, in fact, my office could, could be of assistance, because it was told to me that, that I was not a friend of the Elk's. And so, I wanted to put that myth to bed, to basically say that I'm here representing all people, not just one segment of the population. And as a representative, I have a responsibility to make sure that I not only develop relationships with the business owners, but the residents alike, and, and take all issues that come before my office very seriously, and look into them and see how I can make it a win-win for the community, specifically trying to beautify and, and change the image of Ward Five. It's a fabulous ward in which I represent, and we have fabulous people living there, as well as fabulous business owners that operate their shops as well. And I'm very pleased with the work that you have been able to do, you and your members, as far as keeping your parking lot clear, specifically during the nighttime hours, and running a very clean operation. And you made the request of extending your hours. That's new to me. I'm not in a position right now to adjust those hours, but if you would like to speak to me further about it, what I can do is, is obey this item for a couple of weeks, which will give us an opportunity to meet, so that I can hear as to why you and the members feel that as those hours should be adjusted. I would be willing to do that, but as of right now, I would like to maintain the hours as they exist.
Councilman, may I speak?
Sure.
Well, we are, we are not so much concerned with the hours at this time. We just want the, the opportunity, if the need arises, to be able, like, as the other Elk's Lodges in, in the area, to be able to operate beyond those hours if necessary. We, we, we do police ourselves. When, when, when the business is slow, we close early. When problems arise, we close early. There's no need for us to stay open later, we don't. Now, at your suggestion, at a meeting we had, we, we are gonna be in compliance with meeting with other businesses in the area, trying to create a, a lockout procedure, if you will. If we exclude or lock out a person from our location, we'll give a courtesy call to the other location, let, let them know that this is happening, so they can one from place to place.
Correct.
That way, if, if the need be, if we, if we have a closing time at one a.m., if there's a problem that we can't control, we'll call Metro, we're gonna close our place down and lock it up. So we, we just want the opportunity. Some of us are coming up, we do a lot of fundraising activities for the, the community area. As a matter of fact, I, I extended an invitation to little Ms. Skrogan's on her shoe drive, and we'll assist, we're gonna be assisting her in that. But sometimes we need to open a little earlier to get, get things done, stay open a little bit later to get things done. We just want that opportunity. We don't, it's, it's not anything that's, we need to be itching stone. I talked to Mr. DiFiore. He indicated another alternative. We can get special event permits...
Correct.
...to get, have that done. So we're fine with that.
Okay. Then, well, if that being the case, then I support you on that, and that's something that I most definitely welcome you all to do. that I most definitely welcome you all to do. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. DiFiore, is there anything that you need to read into the record prior to my motion?
If what we just decided today, we're going to keep the hours of operation the same, and he would come forward with special event permits, which then the council could approve, or the hours of operation for those special events on an individual basis, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Conditions then would be, the hours of operation would remain the same from twelve noon to twelve AM Sunday through Thursday, and from twelve noon to one AM Friday and Saturday night.
Okay, and do you agree to that, Mrs. McCrory?
Yes, that also a permanent license, Mr. DiFiore?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so being that you agreed to those conditions, I would move to approve this item, subject to the amended conditions for the record.
All right, that's the motion, let's vote. Vote, please. Post? Motion carries, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item forty-three is discussion and possible action regarding an appeal of work card denial for Ronald D. Smith. This is in Ward four. Mr. DiFiore.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Smith is here today to ask the council for a change in the denial of his work card, and under our municipal code, it does state that the appellant will have the opportunity to, and shall make a presentation before the City Council, to address to the City Council why he would like to have his work card approved. Before I make a recommendation, I would defer to the council to give Mr. Smith the opportunity to make his appeal.
Very good. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, my name's Ronald Dean Smith. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, Council. The denial was Sims from an incident, a misunderstanding that took place over eleven years ago in California.
By the way, we have the backup material, so there's no reason that you have to reference anything specifically, we've had the opportunity to read, and we know what the charge was, we know what the issue was.
I was charged, obviously, hired a lawyer who passed me on to a first year that I was convicted. Hired an appeal lawyer from a second firm. He suggested that I not go through with appeal, because it was a misdemeanor, in three years I could file for a 1203.4 in the state of California, which is a dismissal. I took his advice, it would never bother me again. November of two thousand one, I was granted to the 1203.4, the conviction was vacated, the not guilty finding was implemented, and the charge was dismissed. My understanding at that time was, the charge was dismissed, everything was expunged and gone. Went on with my life. In two thousand six, I moved here in two thousand two and two thousand six, I applied to be a substitute teacher for the Clark County School District. I was forthcoming of anything that happened in the past, they questioned me, I explained everything to them. The State Board of Education of Nevada cleared me to be a substitute teacher. It was at the end of the school year, I needed work, so I found other employment instead of continuing with substitute teaching. In two thousand seven, my wife and I started the adoption process. Once again, I was very forthcoming of everything in my past. They asked me about it, I gave them supporting documentation in my defense, both legal and otherwise. After home study by a state-appointed social worker, the social worker, the adoption agency, and the state of Nevada cleared me to be an adoptive parent. For the last two years, I've been working as a server at one of the restaurants of a major casino on the strip, where I handled not only food, but wine, hard alcohol, everything on the strip, you do not need a work card. In January of this year, due to economic hardship and cutbacks, myself and two other servers were laid off from that restaurant, three of us were laid off. Within two weeks, I was contacted by one of my previous managers from that restaurant, who works now at the, should I say, the current restaurant, or?
It's not that, sir.
Okay. At the current restaurant, I'm trying to get the card for.
Oh, well, we certainly know that.
Okay. He heard that I was laid off, asked me if I would care to work for him, because he was manager at this new restaurant. I said yes, he was aware of my background, the owner of the restaurant was also made aware of my background. I went down to get my sheriff's card, and at that point in time, they said no. So they also let me know that I had an appeals process, so I am here today for that. I got a letter of support from the owner of the restaurant, he was planning on being here today, but due to being the owner of a business, he was unable to appear. For the last two months, obviously, it's been a little bit hard financially for me, we've had to borrow to pay bills and so forth. I just asked to be granted my work card, so I can go back to work and support my family.
All right. And the record reflects that we have gotten a letter indicating that your employer is aware of the issues and desires to have you continue working for them.
Yes, sir.
All right, are there any questions of Mr. Smith at this time?
Yes, Your Honor, if you don't mind. Mr. Smith, you were convicted of a misdemeanor, is that right? And did you apply through a statute that called itself a certificate of rehabilitation?
I am not qualified for a certificate of rehabilitation, because I have not lived in California for the past five years.
Okay.
Any other questions of the gentleman at this time?
Yes, I would.
Yes, Councilor Stein.
Mr. Smith, you covered it very well, and I appreciate that, we have this in front of us, but you did not mention something that I think is within your confines now, and relates to your adoption.
Yes, sir.
And it was stated in here, related to state of California, and what has come up and what you're attempting to do there.
Yes, sir.
Can you comment on that, please?
As I say, we're going through adoption process, it is at a standstill now, again, going back to this incident. Our only way to continue with the adoption process at this point in time is to go to the state of California, because I'm not, haven't been a resident, we cannot do the certificate of rehabilitation, which would have just taken us through the courts, fine. I actually have to go through and request a pardon from Governor Schwarzenegger.
Okay.
I have retained an attorney in California, we have all of the backup materials, character references and so forth, and he is presenting that at this time to the governor. When he has other things on his desk at this point in time, hopefully he will look at that and pass that. If he gives me the pardon, then in the state of Nevada, my understanding, since the California was the state where the incident occurred, Nevada would be open to clearing everything here too, then we can continue with our adoption.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. DiFiore, you've heard the presentation, what's your recommendation?
It's kind of a twofold recommendation, I'm going to recommend, because he is pursuing the, being pardoned in the state of California, I'm going to recommend a temporary site-specific work card with a one-year review, with the condition that if his pardon should be sooner than that, he brings it to my attention, and I bring it back to the next available city council meeting for consideration of a permanent work card.
All right, you understand that, sir?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right, that's the recommendation, Councilor Stein.
Mayor Goodman, before we go take the vote, I do have a question for Mr. DiFiore. With the comment you just made, if in the event that the pardon is not granted, what happens at that point?
We will have, still have the one-year review, he would come back to the City Council, he would make his appeal to the City Council for a permanent work card, based upon the circumstances, and the council will have to make a determination at that time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Very good, Councilor Stein.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, I had a question, if I could, please. Did you check out any of the information from when the arrest did occur in California? I mean, as far as the court case information? I know he said he had a... No, I knew that, but I mean, what I'm asking about, to find if, I mean, I knew the result of the court case, what I was interested in was the facts that were presented and what backed up the facts.
Well, I have.
Were they strong, were they weak, because that's what I was interested in.
Okay. In your backup, you have the Metro report, and I believe it was Metro that was able to obtain that information.
I saw Metro, well, but Metro, you know, basically said that they go along with what was reported. Excuse me, we'll see if this answers my question. Well, I know what she said, were there any other witnesses, was there anything else there? All right, thank you.
All right, do you understand what Mr. DiFiore said?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right, Councilor Stein.
Thank you very much. Sometimes it's very unfortunate what occurs in a thirty-second span in our lives, and how it will affect us later, and I think this is typical, and I think it's twelve years ago, I do see your wife is here, I do see your family here, I appreciate them supporting you today, and I'm going to make a motion to concur with Mr. DiFiore's recommendation on this matter.
Right, before we vote, there's only one part of your presentation that you have to correct in the future, it's Nevada, not Nevada.
I'm from Georgia.
A year from now, you'll be saying Nevada.
Nevada.
All right, very good, let's vote.
Thank you.
Post? Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
Item forty-four is discussion and possible action on request to install speed bumps from McWilliams Avenue between Twentieth Street and Eastern Avenue, this is in Ward three. Mr. Cervantes.
I'm from the Department of Public Works, the city received a request to install speed bumps on McWilliams Avenue between Twentieth Street and Eastern Avenue. Studies conducted on McWilliams showed that the eighty-five percentile speed was thirty-one miles per hour, and the daily volume was two hundred ninety-three vehicles, and this is not an emergency response route.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Cervantes? Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have an elementary school on Twentieth Street, I don't know why people are using this as a cut-through from Bruce Street through Harris. It's been a problem for the neighbors for a number of years. I'm going to make a motion for approval of this item, and I'm going to ask staff to look at putting speed bumps along Twentieth Street also, in front of Halley-Hudson Elementary School.
All right, that's the motion, let's vote, please.
And I really believe, we have to make these safe streets for our kids going to and from school.
Post, please. Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Cervantes. All right, item forty-five is the Animal Advisory Committee, the term of Susan Boucher, which expires April five, two thousand nine, the options are to reappoint Ms. Boucher or appoint a new member to fill the seat. Does anybody have a motion at this time? Is there a recommendation? On the backup, are we able to say who appointed Ms. Boucher? Who is that?
That was the first recommendation, and you may be reappointed, sir.
I did. Does anybody know whether she's been attending the meetings and desires to be reappointed?
Yes, she does.
All right, then I would move with Mayor Proten's concurrence for her reappointment. All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? I think my, I think I've got a line here. I have no idea what to do, the little fellow's just gone nuts.
Oh, oh.
What do I do? Help me.
See, that's an email that you just received.
I see.
So you can actually drag that out of the way and then vote.
Yes, we can. They posted it in a chair.
Okay, thank you.
Let me help you here for a minute.
Okay, you can be back on, thank you. I will get into the twenty-first century someday.
You only had four hundred and thirty-three reminders.
Am I okay?
You're fine.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, item forty-six is Conservation District of Southern Nevada, for the position that Mr. Van Corp had served, there's a recommendation that Mr. Chris McGee serve on this board, and that would be my motion. Let's vote on that, please. Thank you. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item forty-seven is Las Vegas County Library District Board of Trustees, the term of Ryan Kirsch expires April seventh, two thousand nine, that was my appointment as well, I would move to reappoint Mr. Kirsch to continue serving. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item forty-eight is the Senior Citizen Law Project Advisory Board, the term of Tracy Itz expires April fourteenth, two thousand nine. Ms. Vogel.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Sugar Vogel, Administrator of the Senior Citizens Law Project. Tracy Itz is a Clark County attorney who served on our board since August of two thousand and six, her practice is primarily in family law, and she's assisted many of our seniors with some guardianship and grandparent rights issues. She's eligible for reappointment, she expressed her desire to be reappointed, and we recommend her reappointment.
All right, thank you. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I would follow Ms. Vogel's recommendation for reappointing.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post?
Thanks, Sugar.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item fifty is Bill number two thousand nine dash ten, annexation number ANX two seven oh three oh, property located in the Simbria State Route one fifty-seven, the Cal Canyon Road, in the general area between Muggleson Road and Rocky Avenue, east and west of Schaumburg Road. Councilwoman, do you wish to have the bill read, please?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you, Your Honor. Bill number two thousand nine dash ten, nor to extend the boundaries of the city, particularly described line to be annexed, makes it unhappily subject to laws, obligations of benefits of the city, and prior to other related matters.
Thank you. Councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, move to approve.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item fifty-one is Bill number two thousand nine dash eleven, an ordinance creating special improvement district number one five one three via Olivero Avenue and Valadez Street, east of Simmiron Road. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Bill number two thousand nine dash eleven, an ordinance creating city of Las Vegas, Nevada, special improvement district number fifteen thirteen via Olivero Avenue and Valadez Street, east of Simmiron Road, describing details, connections therewith, and other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. Councilwoman, your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Let's vote. Motion carries, thank you. Items fifty-two and fifty-three, which are Bills two thousand nine dash twelve and two thousand nine dash thirteen, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. There are no new bills, so we're going to move on to item number fifty-four, and I'm going to ask Ms. Fretwell, how much time do you think we're going to need on item fifty-four?
Maybe thirty minutes at the most.
Okay, then I think what we'll do is, we'll go to item number fifty-four, we'll have our meeting, then we'll have our break, and we'll come back here at one o'clock. So item fifty-four is a closed session, upon duly carried motion, a closed meeting is called, well, I guess we need a motion.
I know, we go into closed session, sir.
Very good. I'll read it into the record, closed session, upon duly carried motion, a closed meeting is called in accordance with NRS two eight eight point two two oh, to discuss the upcoming labor negotiations, and we'll be in closed-door session and in recess until one PM. And we have a vote, please. Post? Motion carries, thank you.
Can you hear me?
As soon as we get a quorum, we'll start. We have a quorum. Okay. Item 55. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have items 68 through 73. Modification 30617, rezoning 31062, variance 30620, variance 31394, vacation 3622, and site development review 3614. Applicant owner, International Church of Las Vegas, Inc., at the corner of Cliff Shadows Parkway and 250th Beltway. The applicant has asked that to be tabled. Item 74 through 77, GPA 32167, rezoning 32168, specialty submit 32548, and site development review 32549 applicant. Peas Auto Sales Owner, Beard Family Trust on 0.55 acres at 3920 West Air Avenue. The applicant like that would be held in abeyance until our May 6, 2009 meeting. Item 84 through 87, variance 33016, variance 33018, specialty submit 33014, and site development review 33013. Applicant owner, 11th Street Holdings, Inc., at the southeast corner of Stewart and 11th Street. Counselboard, I request that to be held in abeyance until our April 15, 2009 meeting. Counselmembers, are there any other items at this time? CNN, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I just make the announcement on with regard to the tabled item that pursuant to Title 19, this item is tabled at the request of the-- would be tabled at the request of the applicant, and they have six months in which to request it to be held-- be having hearing held. Otherwise, the application will expire.
All right. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more thing.
Mr. Scott.
If, in fact, the SDR and the variance results in significant changes to the project, this project will need to go back to the Planning Commission before it's heard by you.
All right. I hope that that information is going to be conveyed to the interested party.
Certainly.
Mayor Goodman, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Brian, what is the definition of significant changes?
If you look in our code, which where it talks about--
SDR three-two eight-three-seven, the applicant and owner is Water Street Center, LLC. Request for site development plan review for a fifty-three-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot restaurant with drive-through and retail building on two-point-five-nine acres, generally located on the south side of Bonanza Road, approximately four-hundred-and-fifty feet east of Pecos Road in Ward Three. Sixty-five is RQR three-two-nine-oh-two. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner is Willock Investments. Required review of an approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at thirty-five fifty-one East Bonanza Road in Ward Three. Sixty-six is SUP three-two-nine-nine-two. The applicant is Napoli Pizzeria. The owner is PK Roman numeral-two Sahara Pavilion North, LLC. Request for a special use permit for a beer-wine cooler-on-sale establishment within an existing twenty-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot restaurant in a forty-seven-sixty West Air Avenue in Suite Eleven in Ward One. And number sixty-seven is ZON three-two-nine-seven-four. The applicant owner is City of Las Vegas. Request for rezoning from R-four High Density Residential and C-two General Commercial, R-four High Density Residential to C-two General Commercial on five-point-oh-one acres, generally between Las Vegas Boulevard and A Street and between Stewart Avenue and US ninety-five in Ward Five. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval for each of these items, items sixty-two, sixty-five, sixty-six, and sixty-seven.
You know, if I could, I've had a change of order here. I would like to hold item sixty-five also, please.
It wasn't that long for me to read, Mayor Potem, so that's fine. No sweat. Thanks for waking up, though. It's a good thing. Item sixty-two, sixty-six, and sixty-seven are all public hearings, which are now declared open. Would anyone like to speak to any of those items? That's sixty-two, sixty-six, or sixty-seven. Yes, sir. Why don't you step up here and give us your name, please, and where you live?
Lawrence Ingram, one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North. This is in regard to number sixty-seven. I'm sure what other city is going to do is going to be really great. I was just wondering if we would, if knew what was going to go, number sixty-seven.
Okay. Ms. Willoughby, are you able to give the gentleman any help on that?
Mayor, at this time, the application is only for the rezoning. We have no development project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, then, we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion on sixty-two, sixty-six, and sixty-seven, please?
Yeah, I'd move to follow staff's recommendations for approval of all these applications with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post.
Oh, I press the wrong button.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now, we'll hear item sixty-three, which is RQR three-one-eight-oh-nine. The applicant owner is Carol Pappas. Required review and approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at eight-forty North Rancho Drive in Ward Five. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Afternoon. Ryan Arnold, thirty-two, no, twenty-six-twenty Riada Drive. Forgot we moved. Here today, representing CBS Outdoor.
Okay.
The reason for pulling this forward, I wasn't quite sure, looking on the map. I was hoping that if we had an overhead, Margot, do we have an overhead on this item?
Is that big enough?
Where is this located? This is Washington and Rancho?
It's right over here by the Winchels. I don't know if you can see this. Yeah, Washington, Rancho.
Yes. Okay.
Right here.
All right, I'm thinking further north.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification.
Public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? All right, say it again. We'll close the public hearing. Council Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. This sign has been there for a number of years. There's nothing wrong with this sign, and I do really appreciate the cleanliness and the upkeep of the sign that has been there for a number of years, so I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item sixty-four is RQR three-two-nine-oh-one. The applicant owner is Sun Investments, LLC. Required review of an approved variance that allowed an existing fifty-five-foot-tall non-conforming off-premise sign to be raised to a height of eighty-five feet, which is sixty feet above the freeway grade, where thirty feet above the elevated grade is the maximum height allowed, and to allow the sign to be a distance of five-hundred-and-twenty feet from an existing off-premise sign and thirty feet from an R-designated zoning district with seven-hundred-and-fifty feet and three-hundred feet are the minimum separation distance required at six-sixteen Eighth Street in Ward Five. Carter, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf, with Clear Channel Outdoor, on behalf of Sun Investments, here to answer any of your questions.
Very good. Council Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Clark, for being here. And this is more so for Margot. Is the request to move the sign?
No, sir. This is just a required review. There is no change to the sign.
So the adjustments, so the adjustments of the height as well as the location has already been adjusted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure for that for the record, because I did receive some calls in regards from constituents as far as the signs being moved, and so I wanted to make sure that we had that on the record, that everything will remain in place and that this is just a review of that condition. So I wanted to make sure that we had that on the record for those that are watching right now. Okay? So being that no changes are taking place outside of what has already taken place due to the sound wall and the widening of US ninety-five, this sign is, is okay for approval, subject to all conditions at this time. Thank you.
All right, very good. Before we vote, does anybody want to be heard on this? All right, say it again. We'll close the public hearing then, and let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixty-five is RQR three-two-nine-oh-two. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner is Willock Investments. Required review of an approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at eight-forty North Rancho Drive in Ward Five. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open.
Afternoon. Ryan Arnold, thirty-two, no, twenty-six-twenty Riada Drive. Forgot we moved. Here today, representing CBS Outdoor.
Okay.
The reason for pulling this forward, I wasn't quite sure, looking on the map. I was hoping that if we had an overhead, Margot, do we have an overhead on this item?
Is that big enough?
Where is this located? This is Washington and Rancho?
It's right over here by the Winchels. I don't know if you can see this. Yeah, Washington, Rancho.
Yes. Okay.
Right here.
All right, I'm thinking further north.
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for that clarification.
Public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard? All right, say it again. We'll close the public hearing. Council Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. This sign has been there for a number of years. There's nothing wrong with this sign, and I do really appreciate the cleanliness and the upkeep of the sign that has been there for a number of years, so I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item. Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixty-four is RQR three-two-nine-oh-one. The applicant owner is Sun Investments, LLC. Required review of an approved variance that allowed an existing fifty-five-foot-tall non-conforming off-premise sign to be raised to a height of eighty-five feet, which is sixty feet above the freeway grade, where thirty feet above the elevated grade is the maximum height allowed, and to allow the sign to be a distance of five-hundred-and-twenty feet from an existing off-premise sign and thirty feet from an R-designated zoning district with seven-hundred-and-fifty feet and three-hundred feet are the minimum separation distance required at six-sixteen Eighth Street in Ward Five. Carter, please identify yourself.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf, with Clear Channel Outdoor, on behalf of Sun Investments, here to answer any of your questions.
Very good. Council Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Clark, for being here. And this is more so for Margot. Is the request to move the sign?
No, sir. This is just a required review. There is no change to the sign.
So the adjustments, so the adjustments of the height as well as the location has already been adjusted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure for that for the record, because I did receive some calls in regards from constituents as far as the signs being moved, and so I wanted to make sure that we had that on the record, that everything will remain in place and that this is just a review of that condition. So I wanted to make sure that we had that on the record for those that are watching right now. Okay? So being that no changes are taking place outside of what has already taken place due to the sound wall and the widening of US ninety-five, this sign is, is okay for approval, subject to all conditions at this time. Thank you.
All right, very good. Before we vote, does anybody want to be heard on this? All right, say it again. We'll close the public hearing then, and let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixty-five is RQR three-two-nine-oh-two. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner is Willock Investments. Required review of an approved special use permit for a forty-foot-tall, fourteen-foot-by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign at thirty-five fifty-one East Bonanza Road in Ward Three.
Rod Carter, twenty-eight eighty Mead Avenue, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Mr. Carter, I got a problem with this today.
Okay.
Would it be possible to hold this in abeyance? We had a prior item, item sixty-two, which is an approved shopping center, right underneath where the sign sits, just to the east of it, and I went out and looked at it again yesterday afternoon, and it looks to me like when they get their building built, they're going to have a hard time putting any signage up on their building to where it'll be seen. This, this is going to be blocking the view of that shopping center. They're going to have a drive-through with two other buildings, and I just, I have a hard time now, so I need to sit down and talk to you, and maybe the applicant or the other applications, if we could.
Yes, sir.
See if we can work something out. Sorry about that.
No problem. I'm the notice to me, but I'm happy to come in and meet with you.
Okay. Can you come and give us your name, please, for the record?
I'm Luis Cataris, with the shopping center next to where this sign is.
I'll, I'll have my staff, if it's all right, I'll have my staff set up the meeting.
Item sixty-two, I'm walking in right after.
I'll, I'll set up the meeting with, with all three of us, when we come in and see if we can work out something here.
Very good.
Thanks, Rod. W, my motion, I'm going to hold this in abeyance until our April fifteenth meeting, please.
Okay, it's a public hearing? Yes, sir.
On, going back to item sixty-two.
Sixty-two passed.
Passed.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to postpone this, or?
Right. Mr. Carter's matter is going to be obeyed for two weeks.
Two weeks.
And then the Mayor Potem's office will contact you and get everybody together to resolve any issues.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventy-four through seventy-seven. Seventy-four is a request to amend, that's GPA three-two-one-six-seven. Request to amend a portion of southeast sector plan of the general plan from SC Service Commercial to GC.
I believe that's going to be obeyed, Mayor.
What happened?
It's going to be obeyed.
Who'd obey?
Seventy-four through seventy-seven.
Seventy-four through seventy-seven has been obeyed?
Until, uh, May sixth.
Okay.
May sixth.
So where am I?
Seventy-eight.
I wanted to stay here longer. Right. Seven, I'm glad there's a little titter in the audience there. That was a neighbor fool's joke. Seventy-eight, the SUP three-two-four-nine-two, an abeyance item, special use permit, it's a public hearing, and the applicant owner is My Charleston Plaza, LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed packaged liquor off-sale establishment of fifty-one-hundred West Charleston Boulevard in Ward One. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Anybody here on behalf of the My Charleston Plaza, LLC? Councilwoman, what's your pleasure?
This was the gentleman who had come, can't, who had been present at the last city council meeting, and that was when we getting, got into the size of liquor bottles and things like that. I think we've solved the problem, and he couldn't be here today because a close friend of his has a funeral at this time. So I would like to move to approve, changing the existing condition to state, all beer and wine coolers shall remain in their original manufacturer's configuration of four or six-packs.
That is an amendment to condition number four in its entirety.
All right, and that's the motion, then?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mayor, Councilwoman?
Because this is an SUP and it involves liquor, it may be best for the applicant to actually agree to that condition on the record unless he sends in a letter to that effect.
Well, let me tell you, he, he agreed to this. Now, I didn't give him this exact wording, but he knows what we're doing. He agreed to it.
Okay.
It helps him.
Okay. My only concern is that if he isn't in agreement with it, that's, you know, once they agree to it orally on the record, then that's an exemption from us being sued if there's a, if he doesn't agree with it, so. If you'd like, you can pass it today if you'd like.
Would you be able to contact him and ask him to just send a note to us saying that he agrees?
I can do that, but I think that if we obey this or delay it any longer, he's...
No, you don't need to.
Okay. Then I will, I'll tell you what I'll do. I will get a written note from him that he agrees to this.
Okay. Thank you.
That's great.
Okay.
All right, a public hearing, folks. Anyone want to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing. We've had the motion. Let's vote, please. Post.
Wait a second, I'm...
What happened?
I think I moved it with my paper.
I have to laugh, because I do the same thing.
I'm trying.
I'm trying, too.
If I may, Mayor and Councilwoman?
We're all trying, all right.
We have a standard form that we use for those parties that have an item on one plus one, where they agree, and we can contact the applicant to get that on file.
All right, please do that. We'll make...
Or would you do that?
Make Mr. Scott sleep easy.
Thank you very much.
Very good. All right, motion carries.
And you can explain to him what this means. Thank you.
Okay. Item seventy-nine and eighty. Seventy-nine is ZON three-three-two-eight-three. Request for rezoning from C-two General Commercial to R-three Medium Density Residential. Eighty is VAR three-two-five-four-one. Request for variance to allow a five-foot side yard setback, where ten feet is required to allow an eleven-foot corner yard setback, where fifteen feet is required, and to allow a ten-foot rear yard setback, where twenty feet is required, and the side yard variance, which should be noted, has been withdrawn. The applicant is Marquise Nave. The project is located at the southeast corner of C Street and Jackson Avenue. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval for both items. These items are in Ward Five, and they're public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present? Anybody here on behalf of Marquise Nave? All right, this is in Ward Five. What's your pleasure, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I have spoken to Mr. Nave, and this is a pretty tough corner as far as the size of the corner, and he has agreed to, versus doing a commercial complex on this corner, is looking to do a single-family detached residential, a single-family dwelling, and I believe we have come to a happy medium to stick with the continuity of the area, and so I'm going to move forward to approve the zone change on item number seventy-nine.
All right. Does anyone want to be heard on that? It's a public hearing, folks. All right, say it again. The public hearing's closed. There's been a motion. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. We're going eighty-one through eighty-three.
Eighty. Eighty.
Eighty?
Eighty.
I don't know. Well, there's a reason for all this. Paper clips here. Eighty. Eighty is VAR three-two-five-four-one. It's a variance, a public hearing. The applicant owner is Mark. Didn't I read that?
Yeah, you've already read that one.
I read that.
We just need to vote on eighty.
So which genius told me to call it again?
Well, I have to vote on number eighty. We have to vote on number eighty.
Could I, could I have a motion, please?
On item number eighty, um, it's something else today. On item number eighty, on the variance, once again, I, I am going to move forward with approval of this item for the single-family dwelling.
Very good.
Thank you.
Vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thanks.
And for the record, at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant agreed to all the conditions on the record.
Thank you. Items eighty-one through eighty-three. Eighty-one is ZON three-three-oh-two-one. Request for rezoning from R-four High Density Residential to C-two General Commercial. Number eighty-two is SUP three-three-oh-two-oh. Request for special use permit for a proposed mixed-use development. Number eighty-three is SDR three-three-oh-one-nine. Request for site development plan review for a proposed four-story, forty-eight-and-a-half-foot tall mixed-use development consisting of sixty residential units and nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet of commercial space, with a waiver of downtown centennial plan, land, streetscape requirements, and to allow no underground power lines. The applicant is Casino Center Midrise, LLC. The owner is Mythic Management, LLC. Items eighty-one through eighty-three, eighty-one is ZON three-three-oh-two-one, request for rezoning from R-four, high-density residential to C-two, general commercial. Number eighty-two is SUP three-three-oh-two-oh, request for special use permit for a proposed mixed-use development. Number eighty-three is SDR three-three-oh-one-nine, request for site development plan review for a proposed four-story, forty-eight-and-a-half-foot tall, mixed-use development consisting of sixty residential units and nineteen-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet of commercial space with a waiver of downtown centennial plan land, streetscape requirements, and to allow no underground power lines. The applicant is Casino Center Midrise LLC, the owner is Mythic Management LLC. The project is located at the southwest corner of Colorado Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard. The planning commission staff recommend approval for each of these items, although all of the items are in Ward Three. They're all public hearings, which I now declare open. Mr. Cherry is here. I know that my daughter-in-law Stephanie represented some of your interests regarding this particular matter, so I believe that I have to abstain. I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor Portem.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry, how are you today, sir?
Great, how are you? Good afternoon.
We're ready to hear from you, sir.
Well, we're excited, Sam Cherry, nine-hundred South Las Vegas Boulevard. We're excited to bring forward this project, an apartment complex located in the Arts District with retail on the ground floor. It's been trying times in, not just downtown, the Vegas Valley with housing and the private sector, and I'm sure government's dealing with issues, and we've had to change and adapt, and we've been out of work now for quite some time since the closing of Newport, so we're, we've gone from luxury high-rise to what we think is going to be a new wave in downtown, which is workforce housing and stuff that, you know, we constantly have the question, Sam, we can't afford this luxury and condo, where can we live? And this is the project that we want to bring forward for the people that ask us that, and it's something where we want people, again, to live and work and play in downtown, and we think that having rents between the seven-hundred and nine-hundred dollars a month range is going to meet that needs. This is a prevailing wage project. We look forward to answering any questions that you guys have.
Well, I'm going to make a couple of comments. Mr. Cherry is the first one that came downtown when the downtown, to me, was crying for residential development downtown. His project was the first one that was finished. I have met with Mr. Cherry, and I have seen this project, and I think it's fantastic. I just want to put one item on the record, and that is, we are changing the zoning from R-four to C-two, and just for those people who are watching around the audience, if this project doesn't get built, anything else wants to be built, they have to come back and make applications, so we can't deny or approve another item. C-two is a, to me, rather, a huge window there for development, and I've always hated, I've hated to change to C-two, but this here, I think, is necessary, so, those are the comments on the record from me. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on these items? Seeing no one, is there any questions, Mr. Cherry, from the board members?
Mayor Portem?
Yes, please.
I just have a question for staff. I see the elevations on our one screen, but I can't seem to see them, and perhaps this is a question for Mrs. Bridges, is why don't we have those elevations on our backup on our laptops? Or do we, and I just can't find them? It has nothing to do with the project. I think Mr. Cherry's doing a great job downtown.
Thank you.
And I just kind of like, not only for us to be able to pull it up here, but for the folks at home to be able to see that. They weren't submitted?
We do have elevations on the...
No, that's great. That's great, and they're in... Okay, so it's on the next, okay. Thank you, Director. Just a little slow. Mr. Cherry?
We can't see the elevations, and I think they're wonderful. So we'll close the public hearing, and on item eighty-one, I make a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation for approval of this item with all conditions. You've heard the motion, cast your vote. Post, please. Motion carries. And item eighty-two, I make a motion for approval, following the planning commission's recommendation for approval of this item. Any question on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. And item eighty-three, again, I make a motion for approval, following the planning commission's recommendation, and again, Mr. Cherry, I want to thank you for having your continued faith downtown, and hopefully this will be a success.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Cherry, before you leave, what's your timetable on this?
We're hoping we can close the loan at the end of August. We have a meeting with the HUD, HUD is having a convention here in Las Vegas at the end of April, and we're meeting with the San Francisco office to further discuss this project, and if everything falls into place, it'd be the end of August that we'd be funded and ready to go.
And how long will it take to construct it?
It'll take about ten months.
All right, because it's a great project.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words. Thank you.
All right, eighty-eight and eighty-nine. Eighty-eight is VAR three-two-nine-nine-five, request for variance to allow one-hundred-and-nineteen parking spaces where one-hundred-and-twenty-six is required on a parking impaired site. Eighty-nine is SUP three-two-nine-nine-four, request for special use permit for a major amendment to an approved special use permit for a restaurant with service bar to allow a thousand-square-foot expansion of an existing restaurant. The applicant is AMVIN LLC, the owner is Becker and Sons LLC. The project is located at the southeast corner of Rainbow Boulevard and Lake Mead Boulevard. The planning commission recommends approval, and the staff recommends denial for both items. These items are in Ward Five, and are public hearings, which I now declare open. Mr. Becker?
I just made this. Barry Becker, Fifty South Jones, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm the applicant, the landowner, and then this is the applicant.
All right, would you please identify yourself for the record, sir?
My name is Kirti Pon Kirti Solot, owner of the Pin Cow Thailand Strong, here to answer your question.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right, folks, a public hearing, would anyone like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have, I've had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Becker in regards to his site. We have received a number of opposition in regards to this site. However, after speaking with Mr. Becker in regards to the expansion of the restaurant, maybe, Mr. Becker, you can go and tell the story on the record better than I can as far as what it is that you're looking to do in regards to the expansion of the restaurant, and how, in fact, you're not bringing on new, a new tenant, but more so allowing a current tenant to expand their restaurant facility. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. The Pin Cow is taking the approximately a thousand feet next door, and they're reloading, locating their kitchen, and then they're just taking the ability to spread out their restaurant so that the seating, all of the seating has just a little bit more room, and because of the extra square footage, it requires those seven extra spaces. So we're asking for the variance for seven spaces, although, you know, our restaurant at our busiest times is lunch, and, you know, we have typically a full restaurant with people waiting. This gives us some waiting area, and it allows the restaurant table seating to be spread out a little bit. And we've been counting, you know, our parking spaces both at noon time and at six, six-thirty in the evening, which are the two busiest times for the center. We always have about forty-five, sometimes down to forty, sometimes up to fifty, fifty-five vacant spaces in our shopping center at all times, so this will place no, no parking hardship on the center at all. And then in addition to that, we share spaces or the parking lot with Outback, and Outback is only open in the evenings. And, you know, during this period of counting, there's always fifty to sometimes seventy spaces left in their parking lot, and coincidentally, they're the spaces that are actually closest to ours because, you know, we're a little bit further away from their front door. So I would hope you would follow the recommendation of planning.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing, folks? If anyone would like to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, in the back of, or I should say, the research that I conducted, this dates all the way back to planning commission March ninth, two thousand and six, when in fact the first variance came before this property due to the taking of the Becker's property with the widening of Rainbow, according to the record, which a variance had to take place at that point of time also. And that was what triggered the residents' concern in regards to you having had a variance before, now you're asking for an additional variance, but the caveat in it is the fact that you're not bringing on additional stores that will basically generate more traffic. You're actually expanding one of your current tenants, and so that's what brings a level of comfort for me, and I believe it also was fairly comfortable for the residents that I spoke to about that as well. So with that, I do agree with the variance, and I would like to move forward with a recommendation of approval of this item.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just, if I could, just like to add, you've done a great job successfully with your restaurant, I just hope it continues in these difficult times. You've really done a great job.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell, before we vote, do you want to tell whoever's looking at this about your restaurant? There's a chance for about three million dollars worth of free advertising.
We take out the best of Las Vegas this Sunday. It's number three now.
Okay, very good. And you have a specialty?
It's a Thai restaurant.
Oh, okay.
And they feature Thai food, and they're going to be, what, number three best Thai restaurant in Las Vegas?
No. It's three, yeah, now.
Oh, they have, he has three locations here now.
I have three locations.
Will he have a full bar?
A full...
No.
Oh, will he have a half a bar?
Well, I mean, if you approve, if you approve eighty-nine, then he still has his use permit to serve liquor along with a service bar.
Very good, that's what I'm interested in. Okay, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries? And eighty-nine?
Yes, I would like to move to, move for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
Okay, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ninety is VAR three-two-nine-nine-eight. It's a variance, a public hearing. The applicant owner is Oscar Seguenza, request for a variance to allow a nine-foot rear yard setback where thirty feet is the minimum required for the conversion of an existing carport into habitable space on point-three-three acres at forty-six-sixty Marlena Circle. This is in Ward Five, and the planning commission and staff both recommend denial. It's a public hearing which is now open. Is anybody here on behalf of Mr. Seguenza? Yes, sir. Why don't you come up and tell us who you are?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Oscar Seguenza, and I own the property.
All right, would you like to say anything to us at this time?
Just the same thing. I'm here to ask him for a variance to get permits on the addition that was made in nineteen-sixty-nine. And as I said before, I purchased this property about four years ago, and I bought it as is.
All right, Councilor Russ?
You might not understand this correctly, this addition was made when? Nineteen sixty-nine?
Based on the records, it shows that the addition was made up in nineteen-sixty-nine.
And you bought the property?
Four years ago.
Four years ago, and now the city is requiring you to go back and get a variance?
Because whoever owns the property at that time, I guess, at that time, I don't know, they didn't ask for permits, and so they just made the addition. One part was a carport, the day converter, as a family room, and then the rest of the addition, they just built it without permits.
Well, that's what I'm asking here, Your Honor. You, this was, the addition was made in nineteen-sixty-nine. No permits and no inspections. You buy the home four years ago, and now the city's requiring you to get permits, inspections, and a variance? That's what I'm missing here. Can somebody help me?
If I may?
Yes, sir. Ms. Wheeler?
That's not true.
The carport was built in nineteen-seventy-nine and finalled in nineteen-eighty-one, sometime subsequent to nineteen-eighty-one, a carport was then converted into habitable space after nineteen-eighty-one. It came to the attention of code enforcement, and at this point in time is why a variance is necessary, because that carport has been converted into habitable space sometime after eighty-one.
Again, Your Honor.
Any home that you purchased, any home that's purchased that has construction that is not permitted, if and when it comes to the attention of the city, if it cannot be permitted because it meets the proper setbacks, then the responsibility is with the property owner if illegal construction has occurred.
With the, through the mayor, with the existing owner, even though perhaps he purchased it from...
Yes, sir, that's a real estate issue, not a...
I understand that. I'm just trying to see how far the city's reaching in to, reaching backwards to collect fees and to have inspections.
We do not seek these out, sir, when they come to our attention, then we need to process them appropriately.
And Councilman, just for the record, we've done this on a number of occasions with casitas and sheds and a number of things where the person may be the second or third owner, and they're tagged with actually having to come in and get new building permits, or have inspections, or do variances. It's just when people complain that code enforcement goes out and checks on it, so there must have been some reason that this came to their attention.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you both, I appreciate it.
Very good. It's a public hearing, folks? Would anyone like to be heard on this? Please give us your name.
My name is David Woolman. I live at four-four-four-six Marlena Circle, directly next to the applicant. The reason that they're going back for the variance is because we called code enforcement because Mr. Seguenza here hasn't lived in the residence since he's bought it. It's been a rental property since he's had it, and he's had multiple families living in it. At some point about, within two years ago, he actually had people come in, build a wall in the middle of the house, and sectioned it off to make a duplex. We called code enforcement, they came out, they made him take apart the wall, and he put a door in it. I guess this made it good then. He still has two different families living in a single-family development, and the place is a dump, it always has been. It's lowering my property values and everybody else in our neighborhood, and that's what we're concerned about. It's not that he's trying to go back and fix it, he's trying to make it a duplex so he can have two different families living in it and rent out his property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Owen Nitz. I own the property adjacent at forty-four-sixty-five Marlena Circle. My office address at the present time is six-oh-one South Tenth Street. I moved into that house in nineteen-sixty-five and lived there until nineteen-eighty-seven. And my daughter, Gina Guevara, who is right here, has lived in that house since then, and she presently occupies it. I think that Mr. Woolman probably has pretty much personified what's going on there. I have some photos, but I really would like to show you a couple. Is that the right direction?
It's not on there. Let's, there, no, you're sideways.
This way?
There you go.
The other way?
No, that's good. There you go.
That's Mr. Woolman's house right there. That's immediately adjacent to the right as you face the applicant's house. This one is my house, which is immediately to the left as you face the applicant's house. That whole circle really was called Parkchester a long time ago, and it was built by Provinzano way back in the early sixties. That's really all, it's been a really nice neighborhood, and right across the street to the, what is that, to the east, I guess, is another neighborhood that was built, and really, this has been a pretty nice neighborhood. I haven't lived there for quite a while, as you, many of you probably know, but Gina lives there with her family. I wasn't quite familiar with some of these circumstances as the applicant has indicated, but I do know that this applicant certainly doesn't take care of his house, and let me show you a couple of photos.
Okay, but that's not relevant to what we're doing today.
You know, that's probably right.
It's the first time we've agreed in about, what, forty years?
Ain't it the truth?
But it's been a wonderful relationship.
Well, it really has. You've been a great friend for a long time.
That's the truth.
Your Honor. I think, but what has happened is really, there's quite a bit of feeling about this, as you can see from the people that are here, so I think perhaps they live there, we have five different, including Mr. Woolman, five different residences, or residents there, and they should come up and talk to you and let you know basically what's going on over there. I don't live there at all, but I still have a pride in my house, and Gina keeps it up pretty well.
Good, thank you.
Hi.
It's good seeing you, too.
Jessica Costa, forty-four forty-six Marlena Circle. I was just there, and I was in the house, I made friends with the neighbors that were there, and I said, hey, what's going on? She let me in. I saw the construction, there's a kitchen in the side, there is three bedrooms and one bathroom, and they're like very tiny bedrooms. Basically, he runs, he's like a slumlord, and he just lets anybody in, and they've had lots of drive-bys, and when they have parties, just stuff goes everywhere, they don't care about them, and he obviously doesn't care about our neighborhood. So I just hope that you strike it down and make him fix it and make it a carport, or back to where it's supposed to be. It's not, he's totally lying, and I would not lie about that, because this is my neighborhood, and that's my name. I wouldn't say that, that he did, didn't do that, because he did. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Brian Ward, and I live forty-four-twenty-eight, about two doors from this place. And we are concerned because we got a lot of traffic with all these people coming and going. And anyway, we tried this before, and we've turned it down, and I'm afraid it's going to turn into a slum or something, the way it's going, because of all the traffic coming and all these young kids. coming and all these young kids. So we would appreciate it if you would please stand by your pre-just to say, I know, I'm just trying this time.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please.
My name's Robin McGee. I own forty-four-twenty-nine Marlena, directly across the street, and, I guess. I've watched, this piece of property's gone down, I've only lived there since two thousand and five, and I can see how much this piece of property we're talking about's gone downhill. Just, I mean, there's no lawn left, they park all over it. I mean, after the last meeting we had here, they did come by and get the truck off the property that was an eighteen-wheeler that, I didn't know it was up on blocks, I did notice it was parked beside the house. Someone did put tires on it, and they towed it out of there and winched it up on a truck and got rid of it, okay? And I know that Mr. Seguenza, he came by and looked at it. I saw him there a couple of days after our last meeting. But I'd like it to stay the way it is. I want, this, you know, I bought in a single-family residence, you know, and these houses are not, shouldn't be made into duplexes, and I think it should be struck down, because that's what the intent of his motion is.
Thank you. Next, please.
Uh, my name's Lou Marshall. I live forty-four-ten Marlena Circle. Lived there for sixteen years. I bought the house because of a single-family dwelling, and there's always ten people living in a house, there's traffic everywhere, it's a fire hazard for everybody to be living in the same house, and I just don't want to go see it go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, may I have one more comment?
Certainly.
It appears that there really is a credibility stretch here. I haven't been inside this applicant's house, but Mrs. Woolman has been, and as you can see, he's from her, he's built a wall in there and separated out into a duplex. So I think there's some significant credibility as far as this applicant's concerned. He's trying to change the use of the house and the one that's not, that is prohibited as such, or not trying to, has changed it. Now looking for some, some approval from you. So I would request a denial, please.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to be heard from the public?
Your Honor, can I say one more thing to Councilman Barlow?
Certainly.
And Councilman Barlow, this, you know, I grew up over here in this, close to here, and this is, this is where the rich kids grew up, and I was going to school as a little kid.
Well, that's Mr. Nitz.
And, and I'm serious, I mean, my wife grew up right over there in Stonehaven, so, wow, I'm surprised that this is even an issue. That's a great neighborhood, and eight, eight of you are here, there's only nine houses on the street, and eight of you are here, so that's pretty significant, so, just I'll point that out to you, Councilman.
All right. Anyone else like to be heard before I close the public hearing? Before I will close the public hearing?
Can I just maybe just last one comment, please?
Certainly. Yes.
Beside whatever your decision is, it's fine, I will take it. I just want to be clear on what they're saying. I'm not asking to make this single fam, I'm very clear on this, that this is a single-family neighborhood, and I'm not trying to become this, you know, as a, how do you say, multiple-family residence. That's not, that's not my intention. I mean, and I have the, I mean, I got here, she, he just said that I have two families living in there. I mean, I don't understand why there, I, I mean, if they really, for some reason they don't like me or anything, it's fine, but it's, I mean, I got, I got the, uh, the rental agreement. I mean, it's four people. The property has almost thirty-four-hundred square feet, and, I mean, four people for that amount of square, uh, square footage, I don't think that's, that's a lot of people. Now, they're saying that there is a lot of traffic, uh, I mean, even if there was a ten people, or, I mean, I just, I just don't, I just don't get what they're, you know, what they're coming from. So I got here the, the rental agreement, that there was only four people supposed to live there. As far as they're, they're saying that I don't take care of the property, uh, I think the best proof of this is that I'm paying the taxes, I pay all the, you know, everything that I have to pay on the property. I even myself, I paint the property myself, they probably don't look at that. I clean the pool myself, and so I don't know what else they want me to do. I mean, I am sorry if they, you know, if they have that, those thoughts about me, and, I mean, if there's anything, go ahead.
No, it's okay, it's all right. I think, I think we've heard from everybody.
The pool is green and black.
I knew, I knew, I knew I'd hear that.
And we tried talking to them.
Okay, please. Yes, uh, Mayor Potem.
Have you, have you in fact though, put in a wall and separated two units inside the house?
No, I haven't, and even I showed pictures that the property, I mean, it's, it's one property, it has the, uh, access to one to another property, and, I mean, the property, it's, it's the, the same way I bought it, it's the same way it is. And what I'm asking is for a variance for the setbacks, because when it was built in, and I think the, the setbacks, uh, they're supposed to be twenty feet or something, and there was only nine feet. So...
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. Um, I've had an opportunity to go out and speak to, actually knocked on a few doors on your street, and Rick was the only one home. It is, I don't see Rick here today, but I did leave a card for, where's Mr. Owens? Because Rick pointed out, uh, Mr. Owens, yes, right here. Did, did Rick provide you my card when I came out there?
Uh, no, but my daughter Gina is the one that lives there. I, I, I wasn't aware that you'd been there, Councilman, I frankly wasn't aware of it at all, but, uh, Gina, does, did you have a card from Councilman Barlow?
He gave it to us.
He, oh, he gave it to you all?
Oh, okay.
Are you, he mentioned someone was a policeman from Henderson. Okay, then that was you, okay.
Mr. Woolman, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I came out, and it's, it's actually a really nice neighborhood, and I was really appalled with the information that was shared with me when my liaison and I came out there on your street and, and attempted to communicate with the residents on the street, but Rick was the only one home. The information that was shared with me, not only by the residents, but by code enforcement, was that there were multiple families living in the house. Now, I, I was unable to, to verify if in fact that information were true, but that is what I was told, and, and code enforcement continues to follow up and track that. Looking at, uh, what's before us here today, um, and the number of opposition that we received in, in regards to this item before us, I, I can't see moving forward with this item today for approval due to the outstanding, um, issues that reside at this residence. Um, I would like to work with, uh, the property owner. I wish in fact, I, I wish you lived there versus being a, a landlord, because it would, it would work out a little bit better if in fact we could get you to work with the neighbors, but you, it's a rental property, and your neighbors have very grave concern in regards to the upkeep and the, the level of traffic that comes in and out of that property. And I understand, being a landlord, that you may not know that, being that you don't live on that street. They have to live on this street day in and day out while you collect rent from it, and it's not fair to them when they have to basically come in and out, come in and out of their neighborhood and have to deal with, um, the issues at the property in which you own. So today, I'm not going to move for approval of this item. However, I would like to work with you as well as the residents to see if in fact, if there's a way for us to come back, possibly at a later date, depending on what we can work out, to, um, to, to really get a clearer understanding of what it is that you want to do with your property. And I, I think that will be the best for all of us, but today, I'm not amenable to moving forward to approve this item today, and that will be my recommendation, move to deny this item ninety.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you.
And Mayor, let me just say this also, um, if I may to speak to you for a moment so I can give you my card, so that we can be in contact, yes, sir, the property owner, so that we can be in contact, and then we'll, we'll circle back and try to see what we can work out to best, um, address the issues that, that these, that the residents on the street have to deal with on a daily basis to help clean up your property. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor.
I would just like, if perhaps our city clerk could check out, as I looked at this item number ninety, and it says two protests under it, but because Councilman Wolfson is training me well in the use of this computer, I went back to the backup, and it's more than two protests, so I'm wondering, um...
There was nineteen from the Planning Commission and two from Council, so there should be twenty-one.
It shows on the cover sheet.
Yep.
It shows on the cover sheet, but on our meeting, isn't this what we get as a sheet to follow? This sheet that said...
Did we get one?
It says, uh, ward number, item number, protest support. It only says two on that, and to tell you...
That's the ones that come between Planning Commission and Council.
I see, so we add them together.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right.
It should say, because to tell you the truth, I look at this, and I thought it was the total number of protests. Maybe just say protests, as long as we know.
Yes?
I was, I was just thinking, just speaking with Jim, that we may need to open this back up, just because we're going to need to give him a timeframe at which time he needs to make those corrections.
If I may, it goes back to code enforcement, and it goes through their process, the time limits that code enforcement gives.
But normally, we give him an opportunity to cure it first, and then once he doesn't do that, then code enforcement gets involved, so...
The code enforcement action is already open.
Oh, it's already open.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ninety-one and ninety-two. Ninety-one is VAR three-three-oh-two-five. Request for a variance to allow two-hundred-and-eighty-five parking spaces where three-hundred-and-sixteen parking spaces are required. Ninety-two is SDR three-three-oh-two-three. Request for a site development plan review for a proposed sixteen-thousand-square-foot addition to an existing thirty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-six square-foot building, and for a proposed twenty-two-thousand-square-foot building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the east perimeter where eight feet is required. The applicant owner is Local Union five-twenty-five. The project is located at seven-fifty Legion Way. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval for both items. These items are Ward Three and are public hearings, which are now declared open. Are you representing the applicant?
Correct.
Very good. Could you identify yourself, please?
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Council, Chris Richardson, The Richardson Partnership, eight-one-five Pilot Road, Suite E, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-one-eight, on behalf of the applicant. We have reviewed the staff conditions and agree with them. We thank staff and Planning Commission for their favorable recommendation, and request that you would follow that as well.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for the gentleman? All right, public hearing, folks, if you'd like to be heard. Standing down, we'll close the public hearing. This is in, excuse me?
Your Honor, before a vote is taken, I must point out that agenda items ninety-one and ninety-two are, uh, applicant, the applicant is Local Union five-two-five, which I represent to my capacity, my private capacity, and will be disclosing that fact and abstaining from both of those votes.
All right, thank you. Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make a motion to follow Planning Commission and staff's recommendation for approval on item ninety-one, with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries.
And on item number ninety-two, I make a motion to follow Planning Commission and staff's recommendation for approval, with all conditions, and just note for the, the record that we've got a lot of, uh, construction going on down in this area, which is welcome.
Very good, let's vote, please. Close.
This is the hub of...
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, have a great rest of the afternoon.
Ninety-three is SDR three-three-oh-one-seven, a site development plan review, public hearing. The applicant owner is Nical Associates LLC. Request for a site development plan review to add a seventeen-hundred-and-eighteen-square-foot second floor to an existing thirty-six-hundred-and-fifty-four-square-foot building with a waiver of the downtown Centennial Plan lan, streetscape and parking lot screening standards on point-one-eight acres at eleven-twelve South Casino Center Boulevard. This is in Ward Three. The staff recommends denial, the Planning Commission recommends approval. Subject to conditions, a public hearing which is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Paul Larson, three-hundred South Fourth Street, um, representing the applicant. If I can direct your attention to the overhead. The engineer's paying attention. If I could direct, have the engineer go to the overhead.
This is, isn't it?
I'm not seeing it.
I think it's a sunroof.
There we go. Okay. This is the existing building at the corner of Casino Center and Charleston. Um, as you can see, it's pretty nondescript, there's really not much happening there. Here's how we'd like to modify it, that'd be taking out the entire, uh, wall facing Charleston, extending that a little bit and making it all glass for an interior, uh, art gallery, and then adding a stairway and a, and a second floor. The two waivers that we have on the application are for the sidewalk, doesn't comply with the Centennial Plan for Casino Center and Charleston. However, on Casino Center, we're only talking about essentially this curved part here where the sidewalk narrows because of the transition from the Casino Center sidewalk to the Charleston sidewalk. So it's really a nominal waiver, we're only talking about essentially that, that portion of the sidewalk to the right of my pen, as it's displayed on the overhead. For Charleston, uh, just a very narrow sidewalk there, uh, we have agreed to take out the existing block wall and replace it with a more decorative wall that conforms. Uh, along those lines, we've agreed to, we are agreeable to all of the if-approved conditions, uh, that staff has, has proposed, including, uh, the replacement of that wall with a new decorative wall. The only condition that we have some heartburn with is number ten. Uh, when I'd spoken to Commissioner Reese earlier, we didn't, I'd indicated that I didn't think that would be a problem. Uh, however, subsequent to that, I found out that the client has actually gone to the trouble of having vinyl printed and installed at the, at the location. So if possible, we'd like to be able to keep that sign there and utilize it for the art gallery. However, we realize that that's not an appropriate hill to die for, and if it's the councilman's preference to have it gone, then we'd have to live with that. So at, at that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would like to see a nice monument-type sign there that looks, you know, more attractive. When we have these opportunities to take these old panels down, I, I think we should. Uh, I don't like it, uh, I don't have heartburn over it, but I would really like to see them just, uh, come and design a, a different type of sign, uh, you know, on the corner that you got, to me, a unique opportunity to design a sign on the corner, you know, a wall, you know, a monument sign, both sides or something.
Well, again, we don't want this to be an issue that, that kills the overall SDR, but there is an intent to use it, uh, the, the client does find it's a useful location in that it's close to, to Charleston.
Well, Miss Wheeler said it was a hill to die for, so I...
So we, we defer to your, your preferences on that.
It's the worst case of spot zoning I've ever seen.
No, it's not.
That was an inside joke.
And, uh, I, I, can I, can I approve this with, relooking at the sign issue, just having a meeting with them?
Uh, sure, you, you can, you can do that, Councilman, but, you know, also their, their site plan also needs to show the sign, the site plan they had currently have doesn't even show the sign on their, on their property.
Does, does your site plan show the sign on your property?
Uh, looks like the site plan does not show the sign.
And Mayor Potem, Mayor, we don't have this plan that he's showing here, this elevation. It's not in the file, so this is brand new.
I'm sorry, it's, it's not depicted on the elevation, and to my recollection, it's not shown on the site as it were filed either. So I think Mr. Scott is probably correct. So what, to, to address your concern, we would agree to, um, a periodic review, come back at some point in the future to review the sign.
Can we hold this in the bench for two weeks?
Pardon me?
Can we hold this in the bench for two weeks?
I think we'd be willing to do that, to discuss the sign issue.
I, I just, Your Honor, hold this in the bench until our April fifteenth meeting weekend, and I, I did get briefed, we did, we did talk about this, uh, so this is...
It, it was brought up the last minute, I do apologize for that.
So anyhow, I, I feel comfortable holding this for a couple of weeks, I'm sure we can order something out.
I'm sure, thank you.
All right, that's the motion, let's vote. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ninety-four, Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatments? Thank you. All right, would any member of the council wish to speak to, to any issue under the portion of the agenda which allows us to do so?
Yeah, I would, sir.
All right, Councilor Russ?
We just got so many great things going on in the Northwest this, this upcoming week, Your Honor, this is the right time to do this, and I wanted everybody in the audience and the folks at home to know, on April fourth is a spring celebration that Leadership Services is putting on at Floyd Lamont Tully Springs. on at Floyd Lam at Tulley Springs. They're going to have a petting zoo, farmer's market, children's activities, all the great stuff. It opens at twelve, it closes at noon, and it's free to the public. Park admission that day is free.
No, no, it opens at twelve and closes at noon.
I'm sorry. It opens at twelve, it's done at four. I'm sorry. I had four in my mind.
Can you give me some tomatoes?
You might be able to get some tomatoes. The most important thing is this, and this is for the ladies who want to bring their husbands, there will be square dancing, so that's important out there. Also, square dancing.
Square's dancing.
Last Friday night, we had movie in the park at Centennial Hills Amphitheater. There were over five hundred people out there, families out there having a great time. We're doing it again April tenth at the amphitheater, Centennial Hills Park. Also, April eleventh is of course, that's the Easter weekend. We're having our signature Easter egg hunt at Children's Memorial Park, and look forward to having all the families out there like we do every year. So thank you for letting me make those comments, Your Honor.
Very good. Anybody else want to use this time?
Well, sure, we have an Easter egg hunt at Clark High School.
What day?
On the eleventh at eleven. I'm joking, we've sent out all our mailings. I just wanted to check, he said Floyd Lam Park. Thank you.
Very good. Okay?
I'd like to announce to people that on April fifteenth, two weeks from today, there will be a town hall meeting in Sun City Summerlin. It won't just be the councilman, it'll also be the mayor, and the Commissioner Brown will make an appearance back in his old grounds up there, and the city manager will be with us, and also the director of redevelopment.
Very good. Looking forward to it.
Seven o'clock.
Looking forward to it.
Your Honor, can I make one more comment?
Certainly.
I am so glad that you've added this to the agenda, because one thing we try hard in our offices individually to do is get the message out to the constituents in our wards as to what's happening in the city. And I know Director Riggelman does everything he can. It's promoted on Channel Two, but this is a good opportunity for each council member to do the same thing in our respective wards.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Barlow.
Okay, and I also would like to invite the residents of Ward Five out on this Saturday. Starting at eight AM, we're doing a community project at Sierra Oeste apartment development right near the corner of Jones and Lake Mead, just east of, of Jones on Lake Mead, and we'll have a number of youth groups and community members, as well as the Metropolitan Police Department, all coming out to pitch in to really beautify an apartment development that was blighted for some time, and we're going to go in and give it a complete facelift. So if anyone's out there looking to do some community service work, this will be a great opportunity to come out. We'll be restriving the curbs and, and the parking lots, as well as cleaning up the entire apartment development. So please feel free to contact my office, two-two-nine-five-four-four-three before Saturday, and we'd love to have you come out and participate in the community service project. Thank you.
Great, and as long as people are making announcements, tomorrow night, we're going to have martinis with the mayor. It's going to be up at Jackson's, which is at Flamingo and Jones. Everybody's invited. We're going to be honoring one of our locals who works over there, who was a lifetime resident of Las Vegas, and it's a lot of fun and good opportunity to chat about what's happening in the city.
Is that the city council?
Oh, that's definitely, oh, man, I'm not going. All right.
It's close to Henderson, though.
Oh, boy, you had to point that out to me. All right, item ninety-five, ninety-six. Wish you had this set. Ninety-six, a citizen's participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. Those subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please step up here, give us your name. We'll put the three-minute timer on, and be happy to hear from you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins, and I'm activist for the homeless, and I also believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. And recently, I was released from jail after about twenty-two days for being on a sidewalk on Four Master Street where I was resting, and the officer said I couldn't be there, and I disagreed with them, and I was put in jail. And, you know, I pled not guilty to this charge of pedestrian interference. No pedestrian ever called the police to say, hey, I can't get around this guy. So anyways, I was left in jail, and I told the judge, you know, not guilty, and they kept me for another three weeks for that, which I know is coercion under the law, which is against the law. And, you know, once I got to the end of my three weeks, you know, the DA came to me and said, you know, he wanted to give me, you know, threaten me with a hundred eighty days. I said, well, I'm not going to plead guilty because I didn't do anything wrong, okay? And I went back into the court and told the judge, you know, you know, eventually, once my, my turn got up there, you know, that I cross-examined the officer, because I defended myself in court, and I said, you know, did I interfere with the pedestrian? Did you see that? He said, no. I said, the defense rests. So that was, that was it, you know? The judge, Judge Langs said that, you know, not guilty, but I spent twenty-two days in jail for that. And I know a lot of people are being coerced into guilty pleas, you know, because of, you